Welcome to the West Hollywood City Council meeting. Before we call the meeting to order, I'd like to read the city's land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood City Council acknowledges that the land on which we gather and that is currently known as the City of West Hollywood is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabrioleño Tongba and the Gabrioleño Quiche peoples. I'm calling the April 21st, 2025 City Council meeting to order. It's 6:00 PM. And we are joined by a very special guest. Will Gil Gilbert please come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for religious stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gil. City Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Heng.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Meister.
Here.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
Here.
Mayor Byers.
Here.
And we have a core.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, will you please provide a report of the closed session meeting?
Yes, good evening. The City Council convened a closed session at 5:30 this evening. There were three members of the public here who spoke on public comment. The City Council discussed the two items of business on the posted agenda and took no reportable action. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. City Clerk, are there any changes from staff?
Mayor, there are no changes from staff this evening.
And it sounds like my colleagues have some changes. Councilmember Erickson?
Yes, I'll start from the back. F-10, a resolution to oppose efforts to increase truck size and weight regulations. Wonderful. F-9, sponsorship of On the Move Riders Workshop with Metro.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to keep going, Madam Mayor. F-8, the amending of the pre-approved organizations list.
Okay.
Cool. F-7, arts programming and recognition of Jewish American Heritage Month.
Yes.
May I keep going?
Good with me.
Great, okay. F-6, requests for the County of Los Angeles related vacancies within the Sheriff's Department.
Can we hold that?
F-4, the Capitol Drugs Health Fair and Sample Saturday Fair Event. What about F-2? The financing committee letter, request for a financing commitment letter and authorization to issue a loan from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
I'd like to hear it.
Sure.
Okay.
And I think those are all the items I have on my list.
How about F-5?
I was going to include, ask if we could do F-1 and F-5 together, actually. F-1's the RFP for the social service contract cycle.
Okay.
Is that okay? Are there any other changes to the agenda? Nope? City Clerk, did you track all that? Should I read it back? Okay.
F-1 and F-5 are going to be heard together as one item. And then F-2, F-4, F-7, F-8, F-9, and F-10 are moving to consent.
Not F-2.
Not F-2. Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. We didn't get the mayors.
I'm sorry, I'm super close.
This thing's very fast today.
Who did the motion and second?
I did.
Vice Mayor Heilman and Councilmember Meister.
Okay.
I'll be quicker this time. This side, can you all vote again? I'm so sorry. Councilmember Heng? Okay, we got them all this time.
And the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We'll move on to Levine Act disclosures. Can my colleagues quickly review the agenda and report any Levine Act disclosures that you may have tonight? None?
None.
None? Okay, terrific. And adjournment motions.
I have one.
Councilmember Erickson, would you like to begin with adjournment motions?
Thank you, yes. I would like to adjourn in memory of Pope Francis, who died this morning at the age of 88. Pope Francis was a happy individual. If you had the chance to meet him, like I did, when he looked at you with those fierce blue eyes, you knew he was speaking the truth in so many different ways. He taught us to be better, to do better, and to remove conditional, conditions on love. And that was something when I had the chance to meet him last year in November that I found the most profound. I went in front of him in Vatican City in a modest little hotel room where he stayed and was able to be an open and proud, out gay man visiting the leader of the Catholic Church, as well as someone who has changed radically the Catholic Church to help the poor, to make sure that they're doing all that they can to stop war and promote peace, but also removing and making sure everyone knows that the conditions of love know no boundaries. And being, and being an open and proud gay man from the largest LGBTQ population of a city, 50% just being gay man, not even including the rest of our beautiful community, is something that is truly unique, that you won't have again, and that I pray that the next pope continues that tradition. And to give him our city flag, a proclamation, and to continue to remember his teachings of harmony and grace are something that I will remember for the rest of my life and the rest of the world has been touched as well. And for those of you and for those of us that continue to want to drive division and hatred and making sure that we put labels on each other first before we love first, I ask you to look into your own souls and remember what a man who washed the feats of homeless individuals would do, and that is to love them first. So that is an act that I, and a challenge I hope we all take on to this day seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Erickson. Are there any other adjournment motions this evening? Seeing none. We'll move on to presentations, and we have three presentations this evening. And we're first going to begin by recognizing Gil Gilbert, who so admirably led us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, and we have a certificate to recognize you. We'll come up here and take a photo with you.
Our next presentation is a proclamation in recognition of Education and Sharing Day. And tonight, we're joined by Rabbi Yossi Delphin from Habod of West Hollywood, West Hollywood West, as well as Dr. Lehman, the principal of West Hollywood Elementary School. And they're both here to accept proclamations. City of West Hollywood recognizes the vital role that education plays in shaping the future of our community, fostering intellectual growth and instilling values of kindness, respect, and civic responsibility in our youth. Education and Sharing Day was established in 1978 by a joint congressional resolution, and it focuses on the very foundation of meaningful education. Education and Sharing Day is observed every year in April, and we are proud to have with us tonight two great partners, Habod of WeHo West, which is dedicated to providing educational, cultural, and social services to all Jewish individuals regardless of background or philosophy. And that aligns closely with Rabbi Menachem Schneurzen's long-lasting legacy. We are also joined tonight by West Hollywood Elementary School, which continues to exemplify excellence in education through its commitment to academic achievement, inclusivity, and the holistic development of every student. The school prepares students to become thoughtful, engaged, and compassionate members of society. So at this time, I would like to ask my colleagues to join me in proclaiming today as Education and Sharing Day and join me down as we present a proclamation to Rabbi Delphin and our principal, Elizabeth Lehman. So please join me.
Just want to say thank you again for, to the council of the City of West Hollywood. As the principal of West Hollywood Elementary, public education in our city is a, it's a choice for our families. Many of our families have a choice to go elsewhere, but they choose our school, and much of that is, is the quality of education, but also being in the city and being in a school where they feel their children and their families and their lifestyle will be accepted, supported, and a safe place for their children to grow. So thank you for all of your support, financially, even just coming and judging doors, acknowledging us on Education and Sharing Day. We're so proud to be a part of West Hollywood, so thank you.
So I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the mayor, vice mayor, and the council members for everything that you do for everyone in the city. I think, I was thinking, West Hollywood might be a small city compared to other cities, but I think the impact and the trailblazer inclusion, love, respect for every human being is something which is heartwarming, and many cities look to us, and you are leading us. We want to thank you on behalf of the Jewish community. And as the vice mayor said, the Rebbe was someone which focused on love and inclusion and including everyone. So this is a very special opportunity, and I wish you guys so much success in your important and critical work on behalf of everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you both for joining us tonight. At this time, it is my honor to do our next proclamation of the evening in celebration of National Arab American Heritage Month. For over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, culture, and beyond. And since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. And they brought with them to America their resilient family values and strong work ethic, dedication to education and diversity and faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy. And Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing in the entrepreneurial American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. The celebration of Arab American ancestry and cultural heritage educates our fellow Americans, encounters misconceptions, harmful stereotyping, and shared misconceptions by other ethnic groups. And the incredible contributions and heritage of Arab Americans have helped us build a better nation, and they join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. During this month of April, let us in the City of West Hollywood and beyond celebrate the vital contributions of Arab Americans across numerous fields and recognize their lasting impact on American culture and society. So therefore, be it resolved that the City Council, the City of West Hollywood hereby proclaims April 2025 as Arab American Heritage Month in the City of West Hollywood, and encourages people to honor and celebrate the rich heritage, culture, and contributions of the Arab American community. At this time, I would like to have our friend Nadir Fuwani, who is here to accept this on behalf of the Arab American Foundation, to join us at the dais for a photo with the City Council. Thank you so much.
My name is Nadir Fuwani. I'm honored to accept this proclamation from the great city of West Hollywood on behalf of the Arab American Foundation. Each April, the Arab America Foundation formally recognizes the achievements of Arab Americans through our nearest National Arab American Heritage Month. Across the country, many cultural institutions, school districts, municipalities, state legislators, and nonprofit organizations come together to issue proclamations and host special events celebrating our community's rich heritage and countless contributions to society. Our initiative began in 2017 with just a handful of states on board, and since then, our grassroots network made up of around 250 volunteers in about 26 states has helped us secure hundreds of proclamations from local governments, counties, school districts, and beyond. So by 2022, the initiative was recognized by Congress, the US Department of State, and 45 governors. And in 2023, former President Joe Biden officially recognized April as National Arab American Heritage Month in a special commemorative letter to our organization. With that being said, we are very deeply grateful to the City Council, our vice mayor and mayor byers for joining the many incredible cities across California and recognizing this important month. Your support helps empower our communities and uplift us as well. And for that, we sincerely thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much. And for our final presentation for the evening, we will be recognizing Lesbian and Queer Women Visibility Week. And I know we have members of our Women's Advisory Board here to join us tonight for this recognition. So whereas, I'll read the proclamation in full. Whereas, the City of West Hollywood has historically been a passionate supporter of lesbian and queer women and remains at the forefront of the movement for LGBTQ plus rights and visibility. And Lesbian Visibility Week is an annual observation recognized in the United States and Europe that highlights lesbian identities and issues and creates space for increased visibility, celebration, and advocacy. And in 2025, the City of West Hollywood and its LGBTQ plus commission will celebrate Lesbian and Queer Women Visibility Week from April 21st to April 27th honoring the contributions and experiences of lesbian and queer women and non-binary individuals in West Hollywood and the greater Los Angeles region. The city will illuminate City Hall and the global lanterns above Santa Monica Boulevard in pink, orange, and white, the colors of the lesbian pride flag, and will fly the flag at City Hall and in the medians along Santa Monica Boulevard to visibly celebrate lesbian and queer women. And on Sunday, April 27th, the L Project will host a city cosponsored event, the WeHo Mini Film Fest, at the City Council chambers showcasing diverse stories and voices from lesbian and queer women and non-binary individuals. So therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of West Hollywood hereby proclaims April 21st through 27th, 2025 as Lesbian and Queer Women Visibility Week in the City of West Hollywood, and encourages all community members to join in honoring and uplifting lesbian and queer women throughout our community. At this time, I would like to invite members of the city's LGBTQ plus commission up to the dais for a photo to accept the proclamation.
I'm Renee Sotill with the LGBTQ plus commission. And so back in the day, lesbian visibility in WeHo had the famous dykes and their dogs contest, but I think with our new pet mayor, Shadrack, we can have lesbians and their cats from now on. So that's what I'm looking for. Lesbians and their cat contest, okay. So I just wanted to say one thing. The LA Times cover story in 1995, the header was "Out in the Open: West Hollywood Lesbians With Help of City Officials Are Being Seen and Heard." Quote, "Part of the reason we started Lesbian Visibility Week was because there was a lot of attention for the gay male community, but not as much for lesbians," said Mayor John Heilman. "It's unlikely that we'll ever have as many lesbians as we have gay men, but we do want lesbians to feel safe here, safe and seen here," end quote. So thank you, council, for keeping the L alive and well in West Hollywood. Thank you.
My name is Ron Cortez. I am on the LGBTQ plus commission, and I want to thank the mayor, vice mayor, and council members for this proclamation. I don't identify as a lesbian woman, but, but I will say this, on behalf of the commission, it begins with the L. Thank you.
Thank you all. We're so honored to share these presentations tonight, and at this time, we're going to move to our public comment period. The City Council values your comments. However, pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot take action on items not listed on the public agenda. The public comment period is limited to 20 minutes, with two minutes allotted for each speaker. This public comment period is to address the City Council on consent calendar items, other agenda items if the member of the public cannot be present at the time the item is considered, or items of general interest within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Another period is also reserved for general comment later in the meeting for those that could not be heard at this time. Public hearing testimony will only be taken at the time of the hearing. If you signed up to speak on both consent calendar items and general public comment, as well as an item that was moved to consent, you may take this public comment period to speak on consent calendar items. You may also sign up to speak during the second public comment period for your last general public comment. Lastly, speakers should not bring any items to the podium other than a prepared written statement and/or writing materials. City Clerk, how many speakers do we have at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. We have 14 individuals in chambers. We have three individuals signed up in Zoom, but as of right now, only one individual is in the Zoom meeting, but we'll notify you if they come in.
Okay. With 14 in person and potentially three online, that'll be getting us really close to the 20-minute time limit, so we'll keep an eye on the time and see how we go throughout the way.
Okay.
Great, thank you. And I'll call multiple speakers at once, so folks can be ready to jump up when your name is read. The first speaker I have is, and I'm sorry if I pronounce names incorrectly, Megana Nala Herla, followed by Genevieve Morale, followed by Wendy Goldman.
Good evening to the council. My name is Megana. I'm a social work student and a doctoral student at the University of Southern California. I'm here today to speak in support of agenda item F-5. I'd like to thank, sorry, I'd like to thank Councilmember Heng for his work on this item, and I'd like to urge the council to consider expanding harm reduction tools available in West Hollywood. As a social worker in training, I understand and empathize with the importance of harm reduction efforts to support our vulnerable communities. And as a doctoral student, I also understand what the research shows. Harm reduction saves lives. It's been proven to reduce death, injury, disease, overdose, and substance misuse. The City of West Hollywood has already taken incredible steps to make harm reduction tools available to its residents, but there are new technologies available like all-in-one detection kits and new substances that require our attention. Peer cities such as Palm Springs and the City of LA have been exploring similar tools, and I hope West Hollywood can do so as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Genevieve Morale, Genevieve Morale followed by Victor Olmachenko.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Genevieve Morale, president and CEO of the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. You know, with so many really You know, with so many really critical issues in the world, it just seems trivial to talk about a tequila event. But it's really important for Sunset. First of all, we want to thank you for the We Happy program, which has really helped. I mean, it's amazing how much free parking gets 4 million in media coverage. But it does. Free parking is a big deal. And so we really appreciate the support for the Sunset Tequila Event. Going to be kicking off Cinco de Mayo, the 1st through the 5th with lots of specials. Go to thesunsetstrip.com to check out all the different things. And we really appreciate the annual health fair, Capital Drugs and the Chamber combined efforts years ago for the health fair. The city's been a major sponsor in helping us to help fund that event in terms of, not fund it, but waive any fees that might impact the event. And then again, I want to give a big shout out and congratulations to Marco Pelusi. It's his 20th anniversary. He's been talking about it nonstop, to have a business here 20 years in the making that has operated and had a successful business for 20 years. And that's why these programs that you help support, Health Fair, Tequila, Sunset, the, we're going to be doing a vinyl wax event, or We Happy Wednesdays, are really so critical to the business community right now in trying to drive traffic for these small businesses and anything we can do to patronize them. So ribbon cutting tomorrow night at Marco Pelusi's at 5:30, if you want to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Goldman, followed by Victor Olmachenko, followed by Steve Martin.
Wendy Goldman, West Hollywood block captain for Cynthia Sunset Neighborhood Watch. Good evening, mayor, council members and staff. I've spoken about the need for a community park near Sunset Strip and how important it is to residents. Item B10 will update the parks and recreation element of the city's general plan. Please make sure that the strip is given more attention in this study. It has little green canopy and has fallen into a deteriorating state, causing harm to local businesses and attracting the wrong kinds of people. It looks like no one cares enough to fight for beautification when we have many reasons to protect the strip for us and for future visitors alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor Olmachenko, followed by Steve Martin, followed by Alex Silverman.
Victor Olmachenko, longtime West Hollywood resident. Well, so many items on the consent calendar. But I want to thank the city for working to seismically retrofit our buildings. We've done a pretty good job. It's a decade in process now. Over 350 buildings, the soft-story structures have been retrofitted, but about 160 have not even begun the process. And here we are 10 years into it. Maybe a little bit of inducement to the owners, and maybe they want to protect their investments. Maybe we would want to list the names and the addresses of these noncompliant buildings at this time on our city's website so that renters and occupants could know what's happening and what buildings they should rent in. Take the money and run. Fix up that Holloway Motor Hotel. And I know you want to make a launch of it for a transitional center for homeless people. And perhaps we could use the Creative City synergy and look at an angle of historic preservation as we are going towards Route 66's centennial next year. So let's combine affordable housing at the renovated Affordable Holloway Motor Inn along with official designation of that building as a historic resource. And you, as our city council members, could direct city staff to do that. We own the property. Let's make that the next historic resource in West Hollywood. Folks, I am very concerned. I know Ms. Goldman talked about the green space. I did write an article and submitted it to a blog. And it's about the contract that you're going to be awarding, the $147,000, to Raimian Associates to look at open green space. I really feel that perhaps before awarding that, you could have our Social Justice Advisory Board meet with our Public Facilities Commission, do some synergy there, and get some ideas there, and then go ahead and issue the contract. And thank you very much for the On the Move program. As a senior, I use my senior tap card. And I'm looking forward to the summer workshop to learn about more opportunities for those of us who no longer rely on cars. Thank you.
Steve Martin, followed by Alex Silverman, followed by Joey Gaber.
Steve Martin, West Hollywood. I just want to announce that the East Side Neighborhood Watch will be having a meeting tomorrow night, April 22nd, in Plummer Park. 5:30 meet and greet. 6 o'clock, the meeting starts. We'll have representatives from the DA's office, the sheriffs, the fire department, and code enforcement at the meeting. Moving along. Last year, Pope Francis, in a private conversation, made a, used a derogatory term to describe gay men. And when he was talking about gay seminarians. So, does that make Pope Francis a homophobe? I don't think so. All that makes him is human. And the pope may be infallible, but Pope Francis always said that he wasn't perfect. But you know, these days, we're quick to accuse people who we don't agree with with being racist, sexist, homophobic, transphobic. And it's really part of the reason why Governor Newsom has said that the California Democratic Party has become toxic. And I'm really hoping that we can look at ourselves and realize that public debate and public participation will be enhanced if we simply refrain from using toxic labels when we have disagreements. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Alex Silverman, followed by Joey Gaber, followed by Samantha Lau.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members. I'm Alex Silverman, resident of Kings Road. Around 5:00 a.m. on Friday, April 11th, two individuals climbed a fence and gained entry to my apartment complex. They were captured on multiple security cameras prowling around the complex, one clearly carrying burglary tools. At one point, they were seen behind my car, where my bike was secured to a wooden post. Later, I discovered they had tried to burn through the lock with some kind of torch and also attempted to cut through it. They failed, and the bike, which is worth around $2,500, was not taken, but the intent was obvious. When I reviewed the video, which shows their faces, I called the sheriff's station to file a report. I was surprised when the response was, "So your bike wasn't actually stolen? Then there's no crime." I asked, "What about trespassing, vandalism, attempted felony theft?" Not to mention, these people could very well be suspects in another case. You could be looking for them. Only then did the dispatcher agree to send someone. A bit later, I got a call saying they were very busy and I should just submit a report online. Problem there was the system says you can't do that if you have video evidence of the crime. Eventually deputies did come, and they were very professional, but they only categorized the incident as vandalism, not attempted felony theft, which it clearly was. This isn't the first time I've struggled just to get a report taken with urgency. Last year, at the WeHo Pride Festival, like many others, I had my phone stolen. I got a clear look at the thief, who was distinctive and was moving through the crowd, pickpocketing others. Tried to provide deputies a clear description to stop the crime in progress, but I was sent in circles and told repeatedly, "We can only take a report for insurance." To be clear, my interactions with deputies have always been respectful, and command staff have always been helpful and honest when I've spoken with them. But there shouldn't be this much friction just to report a crime, especially when we're trying to share evidence that could help keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Joey Gaber and Samantha Lau joining us. Jason Jen will be next.
Hello. Good evening, city council, mayor Byers, and vice mayor Heilman, and city staff as well. I'm Joey, a volunteer campaigner for Plant-Based Treaty. And I just want to say how happy I was to have been a part of Food Day in WeHo, the inaugural Food Day in WeHo, and what a fantastic event it was. I was thrilled to meet so many WeHo locals and be able to feed them delicious plant-based foods from a breakfast, lunch, and mocktail appetizer hour, all free for the community. We were able to highlight the city's efforts when it comes to food sustainability while providing so much educational and inspiring content. I also want to echo the rabbi's comments about how this is a trailblazing city that looks out for everyone. And I so agree with that and appreciate the city for everything they do, not just in regards to climate change, but protecting all living beings, both humans and animals in the city and beyond. And I look forward to continuing the work with the city and just want to thank everyone that made it possible from the city council and the staff. So thank you.
Thank you. Samantha Lau, followed by Jason Jen.
Good evening, mayor Byers, vice mayor Heilman, council members, and city staff. My name is Sam, community organizer and campaigner for Plant-Based Treaty. We want to thank the city of West Hollywood for being such gracious hosts of Food Day in WeHo. I also want to thank the entire city council for their support, and mayor Chelsea Byers for giving welcoming remarks as well as being on the food policy panel. We saw such a great reception from the community of West Hollywood with over 60 walk-ins of the day, and many people who stayed all day and ended up volunteering. All in all, there were over 600 people who registered online and attended with 300 people in attendance on the day of. The event was covered by WeHo Times, Spectrum News, and ABC 7. Throughout the day, we had amazing plant-based food, food service completely free for the community. We gave hundreds of pounds of produce away, had a breakfast service with breakfast sandwiches and pastries, a lunch service with a large variety of plant-based salads and entrees. And for happy hour, a beautiful cheese board that people were calling it a work of art too beautiful to eat during our mocktail happy hour. The feedback for the event was overwhelmingly positive with comments about how informative and uplifting all three panels were. We also received comments about how impressed people were with the city council's plant-based initiatives that were able to highlight for the community with the help of mayor Byers. I also want to thank the city staff for so much, all of their help that they gave us for approving communications, guiding us through permit process and keeping us on track for success. Sustainability and resilience is our communities, in our communities, is an ongoing process, which we are so proud to have worked with West Hollywood to help strengthen your efforts. Thank you so much for giving Plant-Based Treaty this opportunity to host first-ever Food Day in WeHo. We look forward to more. Thank you.
Jason Jen, followed by Annie Jump Vicente, followed by Sukuru Foras.
Good evening, council members and everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm proud to be working on a grant for the city's 40th anniversary to update Stuart Timmons' West Hollywood LGBTQ History Tour. The original tour was completed in 2015 as part of the city's 30th anniversary. It was written by the late Stuart Timmons, acclaimed historian and author of The Trouble with Harry Hay and co-author of Gay L.A. I actually met Stuart right here in 2013 when he received his Rainbow Key Award, and I was encouraged by Mark Thompson to get to know him better. That friendship led me to learn about Stuart's unfinished LGBTQ walking tour, which he had begun before suffering his debilitating stroke in 2008. And it was thanks to a grant from the city of West Hollywood and community support that we were able to complete his work. For three years, we presented it as a live event during One City, One Pride LGBTQ Arts Festival. Then during the pandemic in 2021, we turned it into a 13-episode web series featuring over 20 incredible performers, which is available right now. You can still watch it on WeHo Arts YouTube channel. Love for people to check it out. The tour is bold, humorous, heartfelt, and just a little bit campy, like the city itself. And now for the 40th anniversary, I'm preparing to refresh the tour with updated content and new materials to reflect how far we've come and where we're going. So I'm currently in the research phase and looking to connect with individuals and organizations who want to ensure the 40th anniversary edition reflects the full scope of the community and its unique history. This is an open invitation. If there are, if people have stories, histories, or input for consideration, they can reach out to me. I'm Jason Jen, J-A-S-O-N, J-E-N-N. Thank you for everything that the city of West Hollywood has done over the dozens of decades, the four decades. And it very much lives up to the creative city. Thank you.
Annie Jump, followed by Sukuru Foras, followed by Mike Nuttall. And we're getting close on our time, so I just want to say that. Thank you.
So I was walking my dog about a week or two ago. It was about two weeks now, and up and down Santa Monica Boulevard. And I cannot tell you how disgusted I was to see swastikas painted all up and down the fucking boulevard, all up and down the boulevard. What a disgrace. I cannot believe that they are still up in some of these areas around the city. Graffiti tags and carved into the sidewalks. Swastikas everywhere, only to follow a quote-unquote conservative rally coming up that's going to take place this Sunday. It's a bunch of fucking Nazis that are going to get together in West Hollywood on Robertson and Santa Monica. They're going to get together to talk about their quote-unquote free speech so that they could praise hate and speak hate. Like, I just heard a whole bunch of groups that are historically anti-fascist today getting praised from the city, right? Rightfully so. They should. And this city doesn't act in such a manner. No one here does. We need people to speak out against fascism. We need anti-fascists up here speaking. But Steve, what he's trying to claim over here is to get away from toxic labels, to allow Nazism and conservatism to enter into the quote-unquote Democratic Party. And this is where we're at. This is what's happening in West Hollywood. Like, I've been trying to warn you all for years that this shit's coming, and it's here. Like, I've been trying to warn you all for years that this shit's coming, and it's here, and this is their first push. This is an attack on all of us. When the fuck are we going to stand together? Doesn't, I don't feel it when I'm up here. I hope, I hope that people understand that they need to go and stop it. Do not let them speak, do not let them speak. They do not deserve the right to speak hate, to preach hate. Fuck them!
Sekudu Forz, followed by Mike Nuttall, followed by Jonathan Wilson.
Hi. So I came to the States thirty-five years ago. I'm a naturalized citizen in this country. It's been five years since I began living here in West Hollywood. Twenty-five years ago, as a newly, you know, as a person, queer person who came out, just came out twenty-five years ago, living in West Hollywood was a dream. So five years ago, when I had an opportunity to live here, I was overjoyed. But I am disappointed now, and not only disappointed, I am scared. So as you guys know, they are deporting naturalized citizens now, right? I don't feel safe here, and especially, you know, with the sheriff department being a federal agent, essentially, nothing, there's nothing to prevent them from cooperating, people who can deport us or send us to camps. I'm going to shift my conversation with, you know, Annie Jump already spoke about swastikas popping up on Santa Monica Boulevard. I don't know if you guys care or are aware about it, but so, Walk Away March, this Sunday. I, I can't really fathom why we can allow this to happen in West Hollywood, because it's intentional. The starting point of the rally was chosen intentionally in West Hollywood, and I am really fiercely opposed to letting this rally take place at Robertson and Santa Monica Boulevard, which is within the borders of West Hollywood, because this rally is blown by people who threatened my life back in 2023, when I called for trans rights rally in Washington, DC. And I am scared and outraged that this is happening in my city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mike Nuttall, followed by Jonathan Wilson, and that concludes our in-person public comment.
Hi there, city council. Thanks so much for having me up here. I just wanted to say first, I went to City Hall, and I had some problems with this nemesis tree of mine in the city when I'm picking up trash, but I met with Helen Collins. I just want to say she was lovely, informative, great, and I thought the perfect resource to meet with, and I just can't thank her enough. And I saw she celebrated a milestone recently, so I just wanted to publicly say thank you to her. And the second part, I wanted to talk about the reporting in the WeHo Times I saw about the LGBT testing center in West Hollywood leaving, and they gave a variety of reasons why they decided they were going to leave. I just can't help think that some of it's not from the funding cuts from the federal government and what's going on there, which of course is not our fault at all. But I just think, when I started doing AIDS Lifecycle eleven years ago, and this will be my twelfth year doing it, which is the bike ride from San Francisco to LA, I did it because I met someone that was in their twenties and converted from being HIV-negative to HIV-positive, and I just can't think that having more testing centers isn't a positive thing for people like this. And I don't think anyone in their twenties or thirties or anyone should be converting at this point, and it's just something I'm very passionate about, and anything we can do to have more testing centers and not less, I'm greatly appreciative of, and just wanted to bring that up to everyone. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. We are close to time for my colleagues to know, we have one more in chambers, Jonathan Wilson, and then we'll move to the one on Zoom. That'll conclude. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city leaders and staff. I'm going to make this quick. As you may know, my name is Jonathan Wilson, and I'm reaching out to you today as a resident and owner of a thriving business in the City of West Hollywood. As my business has grown, the opportunities for criminals to attack me and my business have also grown. Just last week, I was targeted, followed, and robbed of tens of thousands of dollars, some of which my insurance won't cover and I may never get back. In attempting to file my report with the Sheriff's Department, I had a few challenges with the intake process that I was able to share directly with Lieutenant Fanny Lapkin, acting captain for West Hollywood Sheriff's Station. With that said, I'd like to thank all of you for being part of my tribe, especially Danny Rivas, Councilmember Hang, and Mayor Byers for listening and partnering to make sure we continue to keep our city safe. As criminal predators become smarter, so should we as a city while protecting all of our residents, businesses, and community members from becoming the next prey. Thank you again, and I look forward to evolving safety together.
Thank you. We can move to Zoom comment.
Our last speaker in Zoom is Adam Darvish. Adam, you'll have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Byers, Vice Mayor Harman, and council and staff. Just wanted to call in and make a comment about immigrant status today in this country. As an immigrant that, I've shared my home experiences when I came to New York and the struggles that I faced, I'm glad to hear tonight the comments that were made, presentations by Mayor Byers, and comments by Pope Francis by Councilmember Erickson, and also Vice Mayor Harman, that our Jewish family, I'm really proud of our city, and I know that our city worked hard to be inclusive of all, but just makes me sad after forty years of coming to this country and seeing the activities on the news and the immigrant population being targeted. My family, just twenty years after nine eleven, mom and dad came to Miami Airport, who were detained because my father on the green card, they failed to come back every six months to visit me, and he had to bypass for open-heart surgery. They were detained for two days without communication, but I'm speaking English, and they had to get the medical records from Tehran, from the doctor's office that was closed for the weekend, so they finally got released. But after that experience, they never wanted to come back and would ask me to meet them overseas in a neutral country. It's just, again, sad that the pre-immigrant, it's a different standard than our own, you know, American-born population, so I just wanted to thank you and appreciate you, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. And we have two citizen position slips as well?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We have a citizen position slip from Viktor Omolchenko in support of item F seven, which was moved to the consent calendar, and from Wendy Goldman in support of item B eight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comment section. We can move to the city manager's report. City Manager Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and community members. I just have a few brief announcements. The city will host a virtual webinar about resources for West Hollywood businesses on Tuesday, May sixth, from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM, with speakers from the Office of California State Treasurer Fiona Ma, the United States Small Business Administration, and the Small Business Development Center. Topics will include access to capital, technical assistance, and general business resources. Register online at go.weho.org/SCaresources. The city will also be hosting community emergency response team training on May first through May twenty-seventh at Plummer Park. The program teaches basic disaster response skills to residents so they can be prepared to assist during emergencies before first responders arrive. For more information, contact the Community Safety Department at safety@weho.org. And join the city at one of our community cleanup events this April and May. These events provide an opportunity for community members to serve and beautify West Hollywood with neighbors and friends. Supplies, water, and snacks will be provided by the city. The next cleanup event is this Saturday morning. For more information, visit our website or contact the community and legislative affairs team in the lobby. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, what is the fiscal impact on tonight's consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. The fiscal impact on tonight's consent calendar with the addition of items F four, F seven, F eight, F nine, and F ten is three hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars in expenditures, eight hundred forty-eight thousand, five hundred forty-four dollars in revenue, and six thousand, seven hundred eight dollars in waived fees. And we have a motion and a second to adopt tonight's consent calendar. And the motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we can move to our first item on the agenda, well, you know, our public hearing item. Item C one, request to permit a new off-site advertising billboard at eight four three three Sunset Boulevard. The public hearing is now open. Are there any disclosures from council members? We'll start around this end. None? Vice Mayor?
All right. I've spoken to the applicant's representative. I've also spoken to a representative from an adjacent property owner.
I have spoken to a representative from an adjacent property owners, spoken with the applicant's representative, and I've toured and visited the site.
Great. Councilmember Hang?
Thank you, Mayor. I've spoken with the applicant's representative as well as the adjacent property owner.
Thank you. I have spoken to the applicant's representative, I have spoken to the adjacent property owners, and I've also visited the site. Okay, City Clerk, how is this hearing noticed?
Wired by law, Mayor.
Terrific, thank you. And will the staff representative please introduce yourself and deliver the staff report? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's Brian Leeg, property development manager. Tonight, we have for your consideration the approval of a full-motion two-sided billboard at eighty-four thirty-three Sunset Boulevard, which is better known as the Comedy Store. Each face of this billboard is five hundred square feet and with a total of thousand square feet of full-motion digital billboard content. The total height of the board is sixty-nine feet. The site, as you can see by the photo, is challenging. It's challenging to locate a board to minimize the impact on the neighboring properties to the east and west. The site also didn't leave much area for site improvements or public realm enhancements. Included in the project are sidewalk and driveway and planter improvements. The project includes the removal of three street trees, which will be replaced at a ratio of four to one through a tree replacement fee payment. The project was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission in February 2024, which provided recommendations which are incorporated into the project plans and issued, the commission issued a certificate of appropriateness. The commission strongly recommended the project team designate the property as a local cultural resource. The Planning Commission reviewed the item last December and discussed a number of items. The commission suggested further clarification that the removal of the billboard at the end of the development agreement term be the responsibility of property owner, and the designation and duration of any force majeure event in corresponding tolling period be defined by the city manager. These items were included in the development agreement that's in your packet. I did, I did want to read some language that was included in the revised four-point-one-point For the section four-point-one-point four, in the second sentence, we eliminated the term "for" and substituted that for "during," so it read the public benefit payment owed to the city during any annual period due to force majeure event, et cetera. And at the end of that four-point-one-point four section, to further clarify, we added, "As determined by the city manager or designee, the payments due and the terms shall be told by one day for each day that the force majeure event remains in effect as determined by the city manager or designee." We felt this language further clarified the intent and the recommendations from the Planning Commission. Here's a view of the project looking due west. You can see the Tom Ford advertisement on the digital board. And here's a view from the eastern view of the board. And for the public benefits, the public benefits for this billboard are consistent with other development agreements for similar-sized signs in the SAP program. Given the height of this billboard, it's considered extraordinary, or an alternative project requires extraordinary public benefit, and the payment for this sign was three hundred thousand dollars. The project included site improvements, which made it eligible, but in addition to the site improvements, it required a public realm enhancement, and given the limited size of the site, that was satisfied with a payment of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Additional items in the DA include a requirement that the facility continues to operate as an entertainment use, it continues to operate and remain open during the terms of the agreement, and the owner provided a maintenance upkeep plan that's part of the development agreement to maintain the eligibility of a potential historic resource. A negative declaration was prepared for this project in 2021, and an addendum to that negative declaration was prepared in April of 2021. Our staff's recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution ordinance, and it's the project that was presented to the Planning Commission. That's the project the staff has reviewed. And subsequent to that project, the applicant and the owner has prepared an alternative that they'd like the council to consider. We're prepared to discuss that project, but I thought I'd let the applicant's representative introduce that project to the council. With that, that's the end of my presentation for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have questions for staff, or do you want to hold until the total? Okay, great.
I just have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry about that. Can you let me know how many times this item had to go back and forth to design review? I know there's been changes multiple times, but I was trying to get a quantification of that number?
I can't count.
Okay. So it's a high number?
Well, it was before my tenure on this SAP program.
Okay. Maybe the applicant's representative could just tell us the amount of back and forth this has, just so we can be aware. That'd be great. Thank you very much.
So I think at this time, we can have the applicant's representative come up to address us, and I believe you have requested eight minutes for the presentation?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor Byers. Aaron Green with the Afria Consulting Group, representing the applicant. If we could just hold the time for a moment until the presentation comes up. I do want to thank staff for their work on this sign. What I will say while we're waiting for the sign, for the presentation to come up is, this has been a project more than five years in the making. We are truly excited to be here before you this evening. If we go to the next slide, please. So the Comedy Store is really one of the handful of living museums that we have for entertainment still on Sunset and still in West Hollywood. It's also one of only a handful of legacy entertainment businesses in the city that's more than fifty years old. The Comedy Store recently celebrated its fiftieth anniversary. It is still owned and operated by the Shore family, the family that opened up the Comedy Store more than fifty years ago. And the project before you tonight, it really embodies what the Sunset Arts and Advertising Program is all about. One of the core tenants was to create financial opportunities and tools for legacy businesses and historically significant buildings to be able to withstand the economic pressures of modern-day Sunset, of the modern-day entertainment industry. And so this proposal really embodies exactly what the SAP was targeting to achieve. Next slide, please. What we are proposing is a small sign hanging over the front roof of the Comedy Store, as you can see by that little V that's in front of you. Next slide, please. This is the Comedy Store today. We have a number of features that we wanted to be very aware of that are really important to the Comedy Store, like the circular sign that you see that announces the comics, the signature wall, the patio, what we call the lollipop sign, the circular one that's perpendicular, and a few other aspects as well. Next slide, please. This is the proposed project. At its core, it's a simple, V-shaped, small, delicate billboard, and we designed it this way because we did not want it to overwhelm the Comedy Store. The scrolls that you see that frame the billboard are referential to the main stage, which we just had a picture of a moment ago. Next slide, please. This is another shot of the Comedy Store, looking northwest, and next, please. This is what it would look like with our proposed sign. As you can see, or it's, you have to look to see, our pole is actually a relatively delicate pole. I think it's the smallest one that we've seen in the program. It's thirty-six inches wide. It's intentional that way so that it doesn't compete with the front facade of the Comedy Store, and really, as part of the Secretary of Interior standards for eligible resources, the idea is to let any sort of new structure speak separately, be separate, and so that's why you're seeing, unlike some of the other projects on Sunset, not a highly articulated pole design, but really an emphasis on the sign and its framing. Next slide, please. This is looking the other direction. Next slide, please. And again, you can see here the sign from the other face. We have scrolls on both portions of it. And as I mentioned before, this is the smallest sign proposed as part of the Sunset Arts and Advertising Program. Most of the billboards that you all have seen have faces of around a thousand square feet or more. This is half of that, and we were really intentional about that in order to be sensitive to our neighbors on both sides of us, so that we could allow this sign to fit without creating any undue burden on our neighbors. Next slide, please. This is what a typical line looks like today at the Comedy Store, and one of the things I'll call out is the congestion on the sidewalk, especially when we've got lines for shows. Note the tree wells that we are hoping to remove as part of this project. Next slide, please. So that'll create a wider sidewalk. It will also allow for the twenty-four inches of black concrete that we're proposing right up against the Comedy Store to identify the queuing area for patrons. Next slide, please. This is a close-up shot of the sign itself. The scrolls are made from a combination of perforated metal that will be backlit, as well as a flexible neon strip. Again, they're designed delicately so as to provide accent but not overwhelm. Next slide, please. The community benefits that we're proposing for this project are, you know, extraordinary when it comes to the size of this sign. As the smallest sign on Sunset, we're delivering or proposing to deliver nearly forty-eight million dollars in benefit. That includes six hundred fifty thousand dollars for upgrades to Sunset Boulevard. That includes the preservation, the literal preservation, the saving of this business of the Comedy Store for at least the next thirty years, the replacement of the trees at a four-to-one ratio, in addition to sharing time on the screen with the city for its Sunset Arts and Advertising programming. Next slide, please. So as part of our work here, and as staff mentioned, we've had a lot of conversations with our neighbors, and there's been a lot of public discourse about this sign, going all the way back to 2020, when the city first announced its concept awards for round one. It published them on its website, there were press releases. It was really something that the city was excited about and tried to make the public as much aware about as possible. And so what we wanted to do was just sort of share a summary timeline of some of the engagement that we've had with our neighbors, including the Sunset Arts and Advertising Committee in March of 2023, HPC in February twenty-four, Planning Commission in December of twenty-four, and now we're here before you this evening. Next slide, please. What we're proposing is to shift, if the council is so inclined and would like to move a version of this sign forward this evening, is to shift the sign from the Planning Commission-recommended project twelve feet to the west and seven feet to the south. What we believe this achieves is clearing the views partial, which may or may not be partially obstructed from, four of the windows in the Piazza del Sol building. We think that this will achieve the results that we are hopeful here for our neighbor, and we've had a number of conversations on that front. Next slide, please. The other thing that we're looking to do, if we make the change that is proposed, the pole is straightened, and the V becomes just a little bit tighter, and then the top of the sign is leveled off. These are minor changes, but I want to fully articulate them in case the council wants to have a discussion about them this evening. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. As you can see, in terms of trying to achieve the results that we mentioned to be sensitive to our neighbor, on the top is the Planning Commission recommended project, and on the bottom is the potential revised project. You can see that there is some greater visibility from a straight-on angle with the version on the bottom to those windows in the Piazza del Sol building all the way to the west. Next slide, please. This just demonstrates that whether it's the Planning Commission proposed project or the revised design, each from about 250 to 275 feet, I don't have the exact measurement there, maintains the same line of sight to the Andaz tall wall. Next slide, please. This is a version on the left, Planning Commission, and then on the right, potential revision. Next slide, please. Same here. Again, you can see really the only notable difference is the straightness of the pole and the airspace, which has moved just a little bit to the left in this image. This would propose to hang over the sidewalk seven feet compared to the Planning Commission, which did not recommend an overhang over the sidewalk. Next slide, please. Again, from the alternative vantage point. And then, next slide, please. Note here, we do, you can see on the right-hand side with the proposed revision, it does overhang the sidewalk, it does not overhang the street. I will note it's about 30 feet in the air, and given the relative smallness of this billboard, we do not feel that it will be an imposition on pedestrians or those who are engaging at a street level. Next slide, please. And this just shows, as you can see, really the top of the board has been leveled out a little bit. The size would be the exact same at 500 square feet each. Am I about time?
Yeah, that's your time.
Next slide, please. I'll be very quick. All right, we did two drive simulations because we wanted to show the council what this would look like in the real world. If you could hit play, please. So the first one, on the left is the existing conditions, and on the right is what Planning Commission recommended. As you can see, by the time we clear about 250 feet, the view for the Andaz tall wall actually gets better because of the trees being removed as part of the project. It's obscured farther away, but not closer. Next slide, please. Thank you for the council's accommodation on this timing. I know it's a lot. So this view on the left is going to be existing conditions, center Planning Commission recommended, and right would be the revised proposal. Again, you can see from farther away, the tall wall is clear, but once we get closer, it's actually clear for, in the new revised proposal. And whether it's the Planning Commission or the revised design, both, once they get to about 275 feet, are clear. I appreciate the council's accommodation on time. I, along with the rest of the project team, are here to answer questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Do my colleagues want to ask any questions of the applicant or staff at this time, or should we move to the public comment? I see we have about 15 speakers signed up for public comment. Is that right? Okay. So we'll move on to public comment, then. We'll take them in order as I see them on my screen. So first I have Michelle Krilium, is that right? Followed by Oliver Berger, followed by Maya Villa.
Close, it's Gilliam. Hi, my name is Michelle Gilliam, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Item C1. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The Comedy Store is not only a staple in our local community, it is also known globally, just like its performers, and the billboard will allow it and us to continue to grow and stay alive in these challenging economic times. Selfishly, I want the billboard because whenever my friends and family come to visit me from Wisconsin, we typically go to the Comedy Store and take in a show, and this would be a new, fun, and glamorous conversation piece and Instagram moment. Less selfishly and more practically, as part of the digital billboard project, the city is projected to receive nearly $47 million over the life of the agreement for essential city services, and we also get to preserve and protect the Comedy Store for decades to come. Please support C1. Please say yes, so there is a home in this legacy location for the next Richard Pryor, Robin Williams, Ali Wong, Eliza Schlesinger, and even for little girls from Wisconsin with big dreams like me. Thank you.
Thank you. Oliver Berger, followed by Maya Villa, followed by Christina Lopez.
Hi, everybody. My name's Oliver Berger. I'm in favor of the C1 situation. Something that I wanted to bring up to y'all is, we have the landscape of Los Angeles, and it's disappearing very quickly. We have the Olympics coming up, as well as the World Cup, and something that I think that's extremely important is making sure that this city's identity is celebrated and then cherished forever. Part of that would be acknowledging what's part of this city and its framework. As far as I'm concerned, this industry runs on comedy. We have comedy writers testing out material, people going to this venue every night, and as a person with a Jewish mother who's tripped on that sidewalk several times, the idea of those potholes being filled in that have trees in them right now would be something that'd be welcomed. I think that this city deserves to be celebrated for what it is, and having that billboard right there would help celebrate that. I hope that you pass this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Maya Villa, followed by Christina Lopez, followed by Richard Baker.
Hi, my name is Maya Villa. Thank you for pronouncing it correctly. I'm grateful to be here and for the council to hold space. I'm speaking in favor of Item C1 as well. You know, the 50th anniversary of the Comedy Store was just three years ago, which is so exciting, and it was celebrating the Comedy Store being the first all-stand-up comedy nightclub in the world. So I don't think we can let go of that kind of legacy here in West Hollywood. And the proposed project is a win, not just for comedy lovers, but the community at large. I think it's fantastic that this digital billboard is projected to bring nearly $47 million over the lifetime of the agreement for essential city services. I think that's a win-win. So let's preserve the Comedy Store, a venue that has hosted great minds, diverse voices, like Sed, Richard Pryor, to Ali Wong. And I urge everyone to support history, support West Hollywood, and the future to come. So please vote for Item C1. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Lopez, followed by Richard Baker, followed by Jaclyn Cherry.
Hello, council. Thank you for seeing me. I'm Christina Lopez. I moved to West Hollywood in August of 2012, and I can't imagine living anywhere else. I'm here to support C1. It was like, I have so many memories in the belly room, just laughing in stitches at whatever comic was talking about their life and making life just a little easier in that moment. And I mean, it gave us like Whoopi Goldberg and Jim Carrey, icons that give us little memories that we keep. But anyway, in an age when we're glued to our screens, we connect at the Comedy Store. We get out of our house, we have a moment together. And it connects us with the world. It's a flagship place in Los Angeles. And after the Palisades fire, where we lost our brothers and sisters at Angelino's, we lost PCH as well, which is a huge tourist attraction. The city's tourist industry is huge. And so to shine the diamond that is the Sunset Strip by putting up the sign, we can enhance our tourist industry because we're losing the film industry, let's be honest. And lastly, as someone who spent six months in a wheelchair and had to navigate L.A. sidewalks, anybody who wants to fix a sidewalk, thumbs up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Richard Baker, followed by Jaclyn Cherry, followed by Nico Brooks.
Hey, my name is Rich Baker, and I'm here also to speak in support of C1. Like so many others, and we've already heard, I moved to California for comedy, and the Comedy Store is, it's served as a magnet for talent from all over the world, and including many of the greatest to hold the mic. We've already heard the names. This proposal sounds like growth, and that's just really refreshing because so many institutions we've lost. I was a big member of the Second City and the Iowa West for years, and they still leave a vacuum in Hollywood, you know, where people, talented people gather to perform. Truth. Where talented people gather to perform and collaborate, and they're gone. And so when I hear that institutions are growing rather than shrinking or going away, that gives me a lot of hope. So if this project helps the Comedy Store to continue to draw people from all over the world to West Hollywood, I hope that the council members will support this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaclyn Cherry, followed by Nico Brooks, followed by Jason Pardo.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jaclyn Cherry, and like so many, I moved here to pursue comedy as well. I'm an active member of many community organizations here in West Hollywood, as well as a member of the industry. And I think we can all agree that the Comedy Store is an iconic spot. It's where I take all my friends, it's where I spend my Friday nights laughing. And in a time, especially post-pandemic, when so many venues are closing, the Comedy Store is one that has really survived and could really use the support of this project in particular. It's mutually beneficial for both the city and the Comedy Store. I'm also an accountant, so I understand money and budgets and all of that, and $47 million just seems like a win-win for both parties involved and the city. So I kindly request your support of Item C1 and help preserve the legacy of the Comedy Store. Thank you.
Thank you. Nico Brooks, followed by Jason Pardo, followed by Tom Meyer.
What's going on, guys? Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Nico Brooks, and I'm in support of the Item C1. For years and years, I mean, we heard the names like Rich Sed, everyone from Jim Carrey to Dave Chappelle, we're onstage, gracing people with the joy and laughter, all coming from the Comedy Store. So I believe by agreeing to these maintenance plans and going through with it, we can keep this happiness going for decades to come. And of course, we're going to make the city some money, so that's always good, right? It's a win-win for everybody. The Comedy Store is a West Hollywood landmark that put the Sunset Strip on the map for Hollywood, and with the city going to receive nearly $47 million, again, that's a win-win. So please support Item C1 and keep the laughs coming for generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Pardo, followed by Tom Meyer, and then Caitlin McCormick.
Thank you, council, for your hospitality and your grace. Like everybody's new favorite, Steve Martin, I too bear no lineage to any famous Pardo you may be aware of. Let's get that out of the way. But I would like to start off things with a joke, so knock, knock! A digital sign at the Comedy Store! Which illustrates my point, how vital trained professionals are in our industry, because nowhere else can the refinement and the social scrutiny of others be held up to such knightly advantages. So here's what we need, of course. We need a place for people to come together, right? If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, come together. And that's where we come together, is at the Comedy Store. I moved here to be a digital sign. So seeing a chance for one of us to make it big is something that I just can't refuse or resist. So I hope we have your support. I hope we have your grace. Many thanks, and may you be well.
Well done. Tom Meyer, followed by Caitlin McCormick, followed by Edgar Kalashian.
Hi, I'm Tom Meyer, and I'm here to speak in favor of Item C1. It's been a tough time the last couple of years for the entertainment industry and for comedy in general. As one of our former speakers said, a lot of small comedy theaters and larger comedy theaters around the city and around the country have been closing, like Iowa West, Second City, even UCB had to close a location. And so, yeah, it's just really important to support live theater and comedy. If we can keep the Comedy Store, which is such an indelible part of the community, going for another 30 years, and hopefully longer, it's well worth it, especially if it's going to also help the city bring in $47 million. So it's a win-win, and I urge you guys to support it. Thanks.
Thank you. Caitlin McCormick, followed by Edgar Kalashian, followed by Mary Heinz.
Hello. Good evening, council. I'm Caitlin McCormick. I'm a Sagittarius, and I am speaking in favor of Item C1, and not just because I'm hilarious. The Comedy Store is really important. It is vital, not only to the entertainment and the comedy community, but to the Sunset Strip as well. This billboard is not only going to bring a lot of business to the Comedy Store, but the entire Strip. There are so many venues, restaurants, clubs that need support and need to stay alive. Like others have said, we were locked inside during the pandemic, and more and more often we are sitting in front of our screens. We need connection, we need live entertainment to feel something, to feel alive, right? Live entertainment helps us connect to one another, and the Comedy Store is where all those TV shows and those sitcoms that we all love, that is where those shows start. And I want to see my name on the wall. So if we don't have the Comedy Store, Caitlin McCormick's not going to be on the wall. And then, what are people going to have to look at then? Roseanne Barr? No, thank you. Also, I'm going to talk about the sidewalk, too, because if you've stood out on that line trying to get into the Comedy Store, it's treacherous, all right? So this improvement is going to help the city, it's going to help the community, and it's going to help people who just want to walk. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Edgar Kalashian, followed by Mary Heinz, and then Victor Olmachenko.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Edgar Kaladian. I'm a partner at the Mayor Bound Law Firm. I am here on behalf of the Hyatt Andaz West Hollywood to express our full support for the Comedy Store's application. I just wish I could make a joke, but I am not funny, so I want to stick to the script. At least, some people laugh. The Comedy Store and the Andaz, in all of its different forms and names, have been neighbors for more than five decades. In that time, we have maintained a positive neighborly relationship, working cooperatively for the betterment of the Sunset Strip. We are pleased to be here before you tonight on the same page as our neighbors. Admittedly, as our staff report states, we did not start out this way on this proposal as we were concerned that the proposed sign would have deleterious effects on our guests and our bottom line, as frankly, the sign will obscure the view of our west-facing tall sign. However, thankfully, after multiple discussions, the Comedy Store agreed to redesign and relocate its sign to lessen the impacts on our operations. I want to personally thank the city's senior staff, especially Dave Wilson, Oscar Delgado, and Jennifer O'Kire for their assistance in achieving this. They took the time to listen to our concerns about the Comedy Store sign as it was originally proposed. They conveyed to the Comedy Store and Orange Barrel team the importance of working cooperatively with our neighbors, and they helped us work through those issues so that we are here today in full support of their application for either of the proposals that are in front of you today. We frankly look forward to coming before you very soon with a separate application of our own to expand our tall wall by a de minimis amount so that they can be fully seen, appreciated, and continue to generate revenue to stabilize the hotel's operations. We also look forward to hearing the Comedy Store express similar support for our plan. TOT has been one of the city's strongest and most consistent sources of revenue, and the Andaz is one of the biggest contributors in that department. Over the last decade, the hotel has generated in excess of $30 million for the city's general fund. Please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Heinz, followed by Victor Olmachenko, followed by David Eckert, who has signed up to be our last speaker, which means if you wanted to sign up, please get your slip in now.
Get in the running order while you still can, everyone. My name is Mary Heinz. I'm a citizen of West Hollywood. I'm obsessed with my neighbors' roses and all of the adorable dogs. I love this neighborhood so much. I am in support of passing the C1 agenda. I am a producer and a stage manager who came out to Hollywood to work with iconic theaters like the Comedy Store. We lost two vital comedy-centric businesses, the Second City and Improv Olympic, and to echo some of the people who spoke, the loss of those two venues has been a vital blow from which we have not recovered. The comedy, our comedy world is on stilts, and it's really rocky, and it's been so hard to watch that happen. And now we're presented with an opportunity to be able to triage a potential future crisis by keeping our eyes on the adaptive future with this very tasteful billboard, and also the restoration of the sidewalk, making it more inviting. Instead of doing that, I call it the Hollywood slalom, where you're like, you know, dodging in between people, it'll make it more accessible. And I ask that the council members to please support the proposed plan, which will provide funds to keep the Comedy Store in the Shore family. A lot of what we experienced with Second City is we were purchased by a big media company, and I've been watching live as the spirit of my most, my passion, my degree, my life being ripped apart at the seams and people being fired, and it's just brutal to watch it happen. So I hope that we can learn a lesson and preserve the Comedy Store and keep our eyes on the future. Thank you so much.
Victor Olmachenko, followed by David Eckert.
Victor Olmachenko, speaking on behalf of the West Hollywood Preservation Alliance.
Victor Olmachenko, speaking on behalf of the West Hollywood Preservation Alliance. And just a bit of history, this building was built in 1935 as the Club Seville, and then it became the very famous nightclub Ciro's from 1940 to 1957, owned by Billy Wilkerson, who ran The Hollywood Reporter, and then it became the Comedy Store in the early 1970s. And so, we realize that there's a new billboard here in the public right-of-way, and it's next to the nationally-recognized Piazza del Sol and just blocks away from the iconic Whiskey a Go-Go, The Roxy, and The Rainbow. Well, now it's being requested by the Comedy Store owners that this new billboard be put in place. But unlike the Family Mani that owns the Piazza del Sol, the Family Adler and the Family Magliari, who own The Roxy, The Whiskey, and The Rainbow, what is it that the Family Shore will not and is averse to seeking official historic cultural resource designation for this iconic property? At its February 26, 2024 meeting, the HPC highly recommended that this property, when they were reviewing the effects of the billboard on it, that this property be considered for historic designation. And it is a potential historic designation. We don't understand why the family would not want this property get that kind of designation status. And regarding the new way of looking at it as you drive west towards the Andaz, it's all from the west, from Beverly Hills, going towards the east. We would love to see what it would look like and what the effects of the billboard are if you are driving from the east, from Hollywood, going towards the Andaz, the Comedy Store, and the Piazza del Sol. So we do not feel that this project is ready for primetime, and it may have to go back to the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you for your consideration.
David Eckert, followed by C.D. Mullen.
All right, I'm the closing act at the Comedy Store, and I'm shutting the place down. So a couple of things, and I'm all in support for this item. I just, a couple of notes for the city. I wish that the attachment period of the Viewshed images were more updated in the presentations to the public, because I think they're way out of date when you see that Pendry is still in, being built in the pictures. I'm all for safety on the street, and I wish that we would now consider maybe a crosswalk at this intersection. I see people jaywalking consistently across from the Pendry and the Comedy Store, and I would love that enhancement to be involved in these plans. I'd like to see where the four trees are actually being planted in the model. And lastly, I just, I would love to see the Comedy Store actually use the billboard for advertisement rather than seeing Bottega Bonita and other advertisements. This is the time to like, really enhance the comics that actually perform there and draw people into that. I mean, let's get that business really up and running even more than they already are. God, I lost my voice. And that's the end of my act. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one final speaker, C.D. Mullen.
Ha ha, David, I get to headline. Good evening, committee mayor and backup mayor. I am an aspiring comedian, and I rely on open mics like the Comedy Store to hone my craft. It is weird to take comedy seriously. It's even weirder to take Comedy Store signage seriously, but here we are, year five. I would love for the project to be approved. The millions of revenue sound nice. I'm not going to get a dollar of it, but I imagine that the Comedy Store won't then like, look to me if they're getting it from the billboard, so that's why I'm in approval of it. And as said before by many of the others that have spoke today, for the common person, that sidewalk and removing those trees and removing the, like, tripping hazard of the potted area, I would take that over anything else. And any improvement that you guys can improve that comes in front of you, that improves the pedestrian experience of being a person who tries not to get around in the car, would be much appreciated. And so I graciously thank you guys for everything you've done to make this happen and will do, and darn it, I didn't, I haven't done a good joke.
Thank you all so much for your public comments. That was funnier than usual. Does the applicant or the representative wish to make any further comments at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Byers. Aaron Green, on behalf of the applicant. I just want to thank everybody who came out this evening. And I wanted to quickly speak to some of the comments from Mr. Olmachenko regarding the Historic Preservation Commission. So what I would say is a couple of things here for context for staff. One, or sorry, for the council, excuse me. One, as part of our development agreement, we will be required to pursue certificates of appropriateness for any major modifications to the exterior of the building. Second, we have, as was described, I believe by staff, a very detailed requirement for an upkeep and maintenance plan that will be prepared by a historic, qualified historic consultant. We intend to contract with the Historic Resources Group, who did the original analysis and updated analysis. And third, I would say, not all buildings that are old or have historic significance are created equal on a financial perspective, from a financial perspective. And so there are lending issues and banking issues and other reasons that are sort of within that bucket that create impediments to this property owner officially designating it historic, which is why we have worked with the city to propose these other measures, which we believe will achieve the same intent and the same outcome. It just won't have the name, it won't be a designated cultural resource under the City of West Hollywood's municipal code. But we expect that with these actions, the outcome will be the same, the benefits will be the same for the public by way of these additional actions. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. I believe at this time I will close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. City Council may still ask questions of the staff and applicant, but we will now move on to council deliberations. Do I have a member of this council who would like to begin those questions? Oh, Councilmember Meister? Okay.
Thank you. So questions for staff. So did the project then not go back to historic preservation with the change that you're recommending to move it, to move the?
No, it did not. We asked for an analysis from HRG, the Historic Resources Group, and it concluded there were no additional or less, no impacts from the move to the, the move of, the potential move of the sign.
So then why does it go back to HPC for the certificate of?
If there's any additions or modifications to the building, it would go back to the Historic Preservation Commission. But the fact that they proposing to move the sign, the conclusion from the Historic Resources Group, that that did not have any additional, that did not have an adverse impact on the Piazza del Sol.
Okay. The amount that was calculated for the public benefit, is it the same as what it, what, the calculation that you had before you changed the project or moved the pole into the, into encroaching the public right-of-way? Is that amount the same as what is being offered tonight?
We didn't have it reevaluated. We didn't think the move was significant to the Viewshed, so I can't answer that. I don't know.
Well, it's not really about the Viewshed, it's about the fact that this is now in the public right-of-way. It's encroaching on public property. So is that not worth anything?
I don't know if it makes the sign more valuable. I mean, it's a separate question if it's over the public right-of-way, if that's a different consideration.
Right. But it's a public, but it's a public benefit calculation, so whether it has to do with the sign itself or what they're getting from the city.
Correct.
Should be compensated. I mean, that's just my opinion. Okay. And then, can I ask, what was, what was the, this, when this sign was recommended by the panel, what was the extraordinary design piece of this sign?
I know the commission had a long and thoughtful conversation on that. And my takeaway is some of commissioners thought it was extraordinary and some of them didn't. The scroll work was, the scroll work was the, where the, it was matched the stage. It was, that was the, I'm lacking the word right now, but inspiration for that scroll work. You know, I, I'm not going to comment in my opinion if it's extraordinary or not, but the commission had varying opinions on that.
But the scroll is not the building itself, it's, it's based on something inside the building?
It was the inspiration for the sign.
Okay. Are we deliberating also? I mean, are we giving comments also?
If you just want to ask questions and then we can come back to deliberations, that'd be okay as well.
Yeah, that's fine.
Councilmember, or sorry, Vice Mayor Hahn, would you have any questions?
Yes, my question is for the applicant. And, and thank you. And thank you to the representative from the Andaz. I know you've worked very hard to try to accommodate the concerns of your neighbors. You're actually comfortable with the alternative that you've worked out with your neighbors, correct?
The alternative shown this evening?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
One of the issues that I think has come up from the owner of the Piazza del Sol is some of the, sort of the, I don't know how to describe it, the frame with some of the curly cues.
The scrolls.
The scrolls, thank you. And the impact that those have on views. Is it possible to move some of those scrolls or eliminate some of them? I know that was kind of a character-defining feature of the sign, but would it be possible to look at shifting some of the scroll work down to further prevent the blockage of windows?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor, for that question. It is possible. What I would say is, our proposal to try to address that issue, what is the revised proposal, by moving it seven feet to the south, it eliminates nearly all of that problem as far as we can tell. The, the decision is up to the council. We would not oppose a modification, but what I would say is if you shortened those scrolls, for example, the, let's say we brought them down in height, right? It would, if there was some sort of obstruction, it would go, let's say, from the fourth floor to the third floor. We'd kind of be robbing Peter to pay Paul from that one particular window that our neighbor is, is discussed with us. But that is the council's prerogative here.
Okay. So, but that is something that we, you would be open to us if we gave that direction to look at that if we were to approve this tonight?
If it didn't result in a continuance, but we talked about modifying the scrolls, then, you know, let's say, removing, moving them down a little bit, we would be open to that discussion and would like to accommodate the council.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of a continuance. Thank you. That was my question.
And there are no questions on the side of the dais for my colleagues? Okay, I do have one question and sort of for the public as well. How would the tree replacement work? For removing the three palm trees and replacing four to one, how does that city tree replacement program work?
There's a fee schedule, and those trees have a certain value, and so we're getting 12 fee, fees for 12 trees. I can't speak to the dollar amount.
That's okay.
But, so they take out three, it's replaced four to one, there's not a location on the site to replace the trees, so they pay into the program to place trees elsewhere in the public right-of-way.
Terrific. Thank you. And then the, there was a member of the public who mentioned the cross, a need for a crosswalk in front of the Pendry. I know the crosswalk that exists at the light at Kings is not too far away, so I imagine there's some limitations we have on imposing a crosswalk on that site. Could you just speak to those limitations as somebody who also wants as many crosswalks everywhere as possible?
I'm probably not the best person to speak to that, but. Can you speak to that?
I see our new director of Public Works. Maybe Vice Mayor, would you jump in?
No, but it is an issue, because I see people crossing at Olive.
In front, yeah.
Yeah, it is a recurrent issue.
Sorry to put you all on the spot like this.
Did I get the mic to work there? Sorry. Helen Collins, Public Works Director. We'd have to look at the, and see, we'd probably have to look at the distances and see what, how would it impact traffic and see if it's warranted or not.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Okay, that concludes my questions, I believe, as well. Yeah, I think so. Did you want to jump in?
Sure.
When you take that mask off, I assume you're ready to speak, so.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who came out and spoke tonight and entertained us. We appreciate your comments, and I, I want to again thank the applicant and the neighbors for working so diligently to try to come up with a compromise that works for everyone. And I want to thank staff for their hard work. I'm very supportive of the item with the alternative that has been proposed tonight. I think it actually works to address the concerns of the Andaz, and it addresses most of the concerns of Piazza. If there is a way, and if my colleagues are supportive, I would want to give direction that we ask our staff to work with the applicant on trying to position the scrolls in a way that minimize or eliminate any interference with the neighboring building. From a policy standpoint, the Comedy Store is a great institution, and I've been around long enough that I got to meet Mitzi and her tenacious efforts to promote comedy and, and of course, the whole family. And we're so lucky and fortunate to have this great institution in the city. And approving the signage here will allow this institution to remain for many years, and it will also bring in a lot of revenue for the community. The improvements to the sidewalk, I think, are significant. That area is difficult for those who walk, and for those who are in wheelchairs, it's almost impossible to navigate that area when there are people in front waiting in line. So I don't want to belabor this. I think the public benefit is great for the community. I think this is going to preserve the, the business for a long time, and it's going to generate revenue for the city, so I, I'm in support. But I would want to give direction that we look at the scrolls and try to minimize any impact on the, the neighboring building.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Meister?
Thank you, Mayor. So I really want to like this project. My first real date was at the Comedy Store, and so it, it obviously has some, some memories. But I, for me, the cons are over, are weighing over the pros, and that is that even though when you remove the, the palm trees, you're giving more room for the sidewalk, as you watched that video, you could actually see how the palm trees add to Sunset Boulevard, and so having them on both sides of Sunset Boulevard actually adds to the, to the character of the Strip. So I'm, I'm not crazy about the idea of removing, removing the trees. The encroachment on the public right-of-way, that's not something that we should be doing or doing lightly. And, and I do have concerns that, that we are not being compensated for the use of that public right-of-way. Because if there's no difference from one iteration of this project to this revised one, then that means we're not being compensated for it. I'm also concerned that the, that the Comedy Store does not want historic designation throughout the entire, like, throughout the staff report, it's all about the culture and the his, and the history and the historic nature of this, of this legacy business, and yet, you know, for us to be able to say it is designated as a cultural and historic resource is, is meaningful. And so to just say, well, we don't want to do it because, you know, the bank doesn't like it. Well, you're making a lot of money on, on a, on a new sign. So I think that that's something that should, that should be part of this approval process, is that they would have to go for historic designation. And then I, honestly, I don't, I don't see that this design is extraordinary. And I remember when, when the, the initial round of billboards were shown to us, and this was before some of you were on council, that, to me, that sign was never an extraordinary sign. So what, so if it went back and forth through design review, it, it needed it. And then the only, the only pro for, for me is, yes, you know, the, the money that it will provide to keep, you know, keep the vitality of, of the Comedy Store. to keep, you know, keep the vitality of the Comedy Store, which I appreciate that. But for the city, I mean, I think, you know, relying on billboards for our revenue is just, it's not, in the long term, I don't think it's a wise thing for us to do. So that's where I'm leaning right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Meister. Councilmember Heng?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to everyone who came and spoke on this item. It's very much appreciated to have this much community engagement in what is going to be an amazing project for our city. And I believe to Mr. James Pardo, I really hope you become that big shining billboard that you came to Hollywood to become. You know, as for myself, this project meaningfully enhances the pedestrian experience by removing three non-shading palm trees and fully replacing the sidewalk. Because it is an ADA issue and I do feel that the project will make the sidewalk safer. And that's just one of the key things of this project. And these improvements are especially impactful during high-traffic queuing periods at the Comedy Store, ensuring better accessibility and safety. Because that is very important for our disabled community here in West Hollywood. And I'm looking at the revenue-generating benefits. We are entering an uncertain time with tariffs, with inflation, with federal cuts. And this is a guaranteed way for our city to earn and generate guaranteed revenue. And to all of the speakers who spoke about the $47 million, you're not entirely right because it's over $47 million that's going to be generated. Not 47, over $47 million. So the proposal itself will contribute $650,000 in extraordinary benefit funding for city-directed use. These are critically needed dollars to expand social services. As a social worker myself, that is very important. We are going through our RFP for social services funding for the next three years. And projects like this will not only bring key support for, for our community in terms of, in terms of preserving the Comedy Store, but also generate revenue for much-needed social services funding and spending. At a time when the Trump administration is cutting LGBTQ medicine, trans medicine, women's reproductive health, you name it, projects like this will help West Hollywood ensure that we can fund our social services programs for the next three years and beyond. And hopefully, we can build up our city coffers to backfill possible, any funding gaps that the federal government will stop funding with our service partners. Because I'm not in the business of leaving any of our community members behind because of these Trump budget cuts. So that is why, that is another key element why this project is important to me and important to this community. And also, I'm excited to welcome another digital billboard that dedicates 17 and a half percent of its airtime to the city arts programming and civic messaging. West Hollywood is the creative city, as many of you have said today. And this commitment proudly showcases the work of our local artists around the world. And over the term of this agreement, this project will generate, like I said, not 47 million, but over $47 million in guaranteed revenue for the city, creating long-term, stable funding. We need it. And as far as project design, I think it's a really creative, really cool design. I actually happen to appreciate the scrolls. And actually, what I really appreciate is the applicant being a team player in talking with all of their neighbors and any other entities that might be impacted. They actually reached out, they did community outreach. And not many projects, not many projects would actually do that. So that's where I actually commend the applicant and the applicant's representative in this process. And as Councilmember Erickson asked earlier, I think this has been a long time. The timeline said began with 2020. We're now in 2025. So this has, appears that it has gone back and forth. And, you know, beyond the outreach, I think this is a great project and I'm excited for it. We're the creative city and it's going to help preserve the Comedy Store. I want to see more comedians out there. I don't want comedy to die. We need places like the Comedy Store to make us laugh in times of crisis, in times of hatred against our LGBTQ community. And places like the Comedy Store bring laughter and make people forget about the horrible stuff that's actually going on in the world. So that is why we need institutions like the Comedy Store. And what I will say is I'm slightly disappointed by the actions of certain billboard operators and property owners who have their own Sunset Arts and Advertising Program applications pending or existing signage on the strip that doesn't contribute financial resources to the city. And what I, and undermining others while advocating for your own projects and own proposals or having multiple tall walls that do not contribute to the city and fighting with your neighbors, especially when you have your own projects and their projects that generally give back to the city and its residents, it's not how we do business in the city. In this city, we have to work with each other, we have to join hands, and that's how we build community. And I'm excited to support this project because I want to support our social services funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
Any more? Great, okay, one more, there you go. You're a bunch of comics in the room, you'll find something to laugh about. First of all, thank you to all the members of the public that came out. Kudos to the applicant for getting someone from Wisconsin to publicly comment on the record about that. That is a level of sleuthing that is not done often, but I appreciate it. You did not tell me where in Wisconsin she was from, so if the original hatred of our original city town still existed, that didn't happen. But I'm guessing Michelle is from a well-respectable town in, in Wisconsin. I really want to thank everyone who took time to discuss kind of the positives and negatives. I agree with kind of the consensus that I believe to be forming up here and happy to figure out what next steps are. I'm supportive of the project. Additionally, I have walked this sidewalk during high times at the Comedy Store and it's very crowded. And so any type of updating of our infrastructure to make it more accessible is needed considering the ways that our streets have not been updated for quite some time and our sidewalks as well. It's a very big project to update everything and to see it happening in this way is, is really welcomed. I am in favor of no continuance, I think, as well as what Vice Mayor Heilman was saying, if we choose to go with that alternative. I, when I got on the city council in 2020, I remember seeing the original design, I think, many years ago, five years ago now. And I really liked that design. I understand that there's always some conversations that have to occur between friends, business partners, community members, and ultimately the Design Review Subcommittee of the Planning Commission. I personally think our own city services and individuals, as well as the Design Review Subcommittee, went a little too far and I think butchering what I thought was great design originally. I like that we've been able to get to a happy medium where everyone is, seems to be happy. We're not having lawyers and a bunch of people come up here today and say, if you approve this, we'll see you in court tomorrow. So that's always good when we can make friends and move forward because this does benefit, I think, the community as well as an incredible store on our Sunset Strip and rejuvenates what is needed to be up there and continues to see the really exhaustive time for the comics because it's very busy. And so my last comment is around the design. I disagree with what my colleagues have said. I think that was a forced error on the city's work. I think that frankly, the fact that this item went back and forth umpteenth amount of times to the Design Review Subcommittee, some to make sure that we didn't end in the lawsuit. But frankly, I think the city council, the Planning Commission itself made this thing what some would call unextraordinary. And I think that's a fault of our own as a city, not as on the applicant, in my opinion. So I, I think that we need to really relook at some of the purview of the Design Review Subcommittee and how many times things are allowed to come back and forth because we're wasting time, we're wasting money, and frankly, we're wasting just getting back into the business of doing business in the city of West Hollywood and making sure that applicants and businesses who are applying for billboards or other permits don't have to go through exhaustive years and years and years of processes. So I'm supportive of this item. And just to belabor a point, because I'm known not to be quick of word, this applicant took five years to go through this process and then plus more to get the award. That is millions of dollars that could have been spent enhancing businesses or doing more in the Sunset Strip or paying their employees to do more or enhancing what could have gone on. And those are city-owned errors. And I think that is egregious and we should make sure that we're not allowing or forcing businesses to frankly waste money when the designs that are coming to us are wonderful and we need to get in the business of getting things through our processes more than holding them up. Those are my comments, Mayor.
Thank you so much. It sounds like we have a motion from Vice Mayor moving to the table. I just will add my comments too because I think what's before us is, in fact, an extraordinary project in what it will be offering to the future of our community for decades to come. I think everybody has a connection or story with the Comedy Store and those memories are things we want to cherish. And this is the way that we have been able to do that in so many ways. These billboard projects have created that ability for us to extend this in the lifetime. I know the question of historic preservation was on the table and I do appreciate the business owner's ability to make those decisions themselves and certainly don't want to make that something we've imposed on them. We know that this is a cherished historic legacy business and that is a source of pride for the city in itself. And whatever decisions the property owner is able to do now with this new opportunity for the future, we also welcome. I want to also just thank and recognize how significant the sidewalk replacement work will be. I think it's always sad on surface level to see the removal of trees, but these are palm trees. I know there were two comics in the public comments in just a meeting ago advocating for the protection of palm trees. And I don't see them in the room tonight. What I do see is a community of folks who understand what this space means and in the lived experience of navigating that sidewalk, I really appreciate you helping us understand and recognize how significant this opportunity to improve that landscape will be. I did and want to continue to think about this crosswalk idea. We don't have to bury it into, and I don't want to see this item continued tonight. I would like to see us pass something. But I do think that idea has been raised. And as somebody who darts back and forth across Sunset whenever possible, I think figuring out how to make that area more safe for the hundreds and thousands of people who will continue to use that space is important. But tonight, we're really looking at this billboard project and I think we have a motion on the table. Vice Mayor, I'm going to turn it back to you though because you had some real specifics in what you wanted to make sure were directed around making sure the scroll wasn't impeding the window?
Yeah, it was just to approve the alternate recommendation, or alternate proposal with a direction to the applicant and staff to work on the location of the scrolls to minimize as much as possible the impact on Piazza del Sol and to approve all of the other resolutions before us tonight. And Lauren is giving me the high sign that I need to say something else.
I was actually going to jump in if you have a second on that because there's some language we have to read into the record to approve the alternative project. And I have an idea about, about moving the scrolls, some language we could include if that's part of the motion.
And before we go there, I'm sorry, I'd like to take Councilmember Meister's comments before.
Yeah, I just had a question about the, the language for the tolling paragraph. Is that already included? Or does somebody have to say we would like to make sure that that's included?
Yeah, Brian read that during his staff presentation. And so what we'll add are a few additional changes on top of that, change language.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I, I don't know if there's a second, but if there is. Well, yeah, and that's fine. If there's a second to the motion, if we could ask Lauren Langer to read into the record the changes.
Sure. Brian, did you have a scroll, I'm sorry, scroll. Did you have a slide with the other changes? The change that I would recommend, if you wanted to adjust the scrolls a little bit, is to clarify that that could be approved as a minor change. So we would add language to 6.2.2 of the development agreement that says changes to the scrolls may be approved as a minor change to move the scrolls down to reduce impacts to the neighboring Piazza del Sol. So that could be, that would be the mechanism to approve it at a later date. And then Brian has a variety of changes to read in, in order to implement the alternative project.
I'd like to get a slide up on the, can I get my monitor? Okay. I could read these into the record, but edits to the resolution would be revised section 9B3 to read the allowable height by 32 feet, 7 inches. Revised section 11B9, second paragraph, second sentence to read. Proposed digital billboards, 67 feet, 7 inch height and 22 feet, 1 inch width is. Revised section 13, condition 2.1 to read. The billboard is at a maximum height of 67 feet, 7 inches and encroaches, overhangs the public right-of-way by 7 feet. Revised section 13, condition 2.2 to read. This approval is for a new off-site advertising billboard as shown on the plans which were reviewed and approved by the city council at its meeting of April 21st, 2025 and which were included in the staff report at that meeting as attachment P. And then second, edits to exhibit B of the development agreement, description of the permitted sign. Replace the second sentence of the second paragraph to read. The billboard is at a maximum height of 67 feet, 7 inches and will encroach over, overhang the public right-of-way by 7 feet. Replace the sixth sentence of second paragraph to read. The top of the billboard will have an approximately 41-foot, 6-inch height above the roof line and will overhang the building to the north and have an overall height of 67.7 inches. And finally, replace the eighth sentence of the second paragraph to read. The total sign height is 32 feet, 7 inches, 32 feet, 7 inches above the permitted height limit and therefore is considered an alternative standards project. And there's one other item on 6.2.2 for the scrolls.
That I just read in. And then the changes to 4.1.4, which were read during your presentation. And any minor corrections consistent with this motion and to close the public hearing. I think that covers everything.
That's what I said. Yes, I would incorporate all of that into my motion. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second.
It's strange, I'm showing Councilmember Heng as making the motion on this.
I'm happy to drop and he can become the second for Heilman's motion.
Okay, let me clear this. And now let's do another motion. There we go. And Councilmember Heng. Lauren Langer, do we need to read the title of the ordinance into the record just to get the first reading done? Okay. So we, as part of this item, we are introducing on first reading an ordinance of the city council of the city of West Hollywood approving a zoning text amendment in conjunction with the new off-site advertising billboard and sidewalk improvement at 8433 Sunset Boulevard, West Hollywood, California. And with that, we.
And there's one other ordinance, Melissa.
There's, there's more than one ordinance, everyone. Give me one second.
I've got it. It's an ordinance of the city council of the city of West Hollywood approving a development agreement in conjunction with the new off-site advertising billboard and sidewalk improvements at 8433 Sunset Boulevard, West Hollywood, California.
Danny?
And the motion passes four to one.
Thank you. We'll move on to item E, unfinished business. E1, the public-private partnership with Plenary Broadband Infrastructure WHLLC to construct and operate a fiber network to improve broadband services citywide. Are my colleagues ready to move into this item? Do you need a break? Okay, great, we'll move into this item after the shuffling.
We'll take a break after this one?
Yeah, that's right. Yep, ready when you are.
Good evening, Mayor.
to improve broadband services citywide, as well as city's anticipated financial contribution to the project. Tonight's approval is not binding, but signals to the city's intent to proceed with the project and negotiate for implementation of the agreement with Plenary. The city's financial contribution ensures project feasibility and highlights its commitment to forward-thinking urban infrastructure, digital inclusion, long-term commitment, and long-term community benefits. The project advances city's goals of equitable access, high-speed internet, promotes stronger, more diverse local economy, and prepares West Hollywood for future, including the 2020 Summer Olympics and other smart city applications. In, next slide please. In 2016, City Council adopted the Fiber Network Infrastructure and Services Strategic Plan. The plan outlined the advantages of establishing a fast and affordable public network, public broadband network, including economic growth, improved services, support for public safety, telehealth, and other smart city applications. Phase one of the plan was to develop a robust fiber optic backbone. Phase two and three plan and vision extending broadband services to commercial corridors and throughout the entire city. The fiber optic backbone now spans the entire length of Santa Monica Boulevard, shown in orange, providing connectivity for public Wi-Fi traffic management network, supporting public safety command center communication for Pride and Halloween events. It also connects city facilities such as City Hall, Palmer Park, Romaine Yard, City Old West, and West Hollywood Park campus. Additionally, the backbone is integrated into the scope of a design district streetscape project, shown in blue, with phase one already operational in Melrose between Craft and San Vicente. In 2022 and 2023, city released bids for fiber project which would have completed the phase one backbone, shown in purple. However, the bids were more than double, was anticipated over $19 million, and at that point, staff decided to take a different approach by soliciting holistic solutions. So in 2022, city released citywide broadband infrastructure and services, RFP. The objective was to solicit proposals to modernize city's communication infrastructure and to deliver high-speed, affordable, reliable internet service to all residents and businesses. The RFP was flexible to allow for various solutions, technologies, business models, including partnerships in which the city might share risk and provide funding and assets. The RFP yielded four responses. The evaluation focused on each proposal's ability to enhance broadband services, foster competition, provide long-term value for the community. After thorough evaluation and reference checks, staff identified Plenary Americas as a preferred partner. Plenary is an investor, developer, and a public-private infrastructure manager with experience with public-private partnerships. Notable projects in their portfolio include Long Beach Civic Center redevelopment, DC Smart Streetlight Project, North Carolina DOT broadband infrastructure project, and many, many more. From the city's perspectives, Plenary's proposal offers most comprehensive and strategic long-term solution. The underground infrastructure ensured network reliability and resiliency, city ownership provided long-term stability, and the open access model promised to foster competition. Plenary's experience with P3 and commitment to true partnership model are also key factors in city's positive assessment. So in 2023, City Council authorized the city to enter into inclusive, into exclusive negotiation agreement, or ENA, with Plenary to pursue their proposal of a public-private partnership to construct and operate a citywide fiber network. As part of the exclusive negotiation agreement, Plenary conducted market analysis, feasibility design, and financial modeling. Three key things emerged. There's limited provider competition in the city. Most cities serviced by two providers, AT&amp;T and Spectrum. 72% of the city is not served by fiber-based infrastructure, and only a third of the city is satisfied with their current services. The map on the slide shows all the areas that is currently serviced by fiber in the city. All of this points to a significant service gap and that the community can benefit from more competition and better services. Based on analysis conducted during the ENA phase, city staff started working on a partnership proposal with Plenary to construct and operate a fiber optic network that will facilitate access by multiple internet service providers offering services to businesses and residents. The public-private partnership model mitigates risk and leverages private sector's expertise and investment while ensuring public benefit. Under the proposed agreement, Plenary will be responsible for design, construction, operation, maintenance, and commercialization of the fiber network. The city will retain long-term ownership of the infrastructure while granting Plenary exclusive access to network during the agreement. The city will not operate, maintain, or provide services to businesses and residents. At the end of the agreement, city will have an opportunity to extend the partnership or engage in alternative solutions. Plenary's initial proposal anticipated the city would only contribute in-kind assets to the project such as existing conduit and fiber, but that was determined to be, that that was determined that was overly optimistic. During the feasibility analysis, more detailed cost estimates and revenue forecasts were developed. Due diligence related to the state of existing city assets and connectivity needs was completed. The study determined that building a viable network in West Hollywood would cost more than initially anticipated. To support the project availability, the city needed to contribute financially to meet the full range of city goals. Factors that significantly impacted increase in project expense and overall risk included project labor agreement requirement, the extent of city's modernization requirements, the condition of city's existing conduit, inflation, and other market forces. Because of that, we're presenting several options ranging from ubiquitous fiber to home project to a smaller-scale project that would still significantly improve benefit and benefit the community. So option one is a citywide fiber network to serve residents and businesses that includes a robust modernization and expansion of municipal infrastructure. In addition to improving infrastructure and competitive landscape within the broadband market, a significant portion will be allocated to the city's use, providing connectivity for municipal facilities, parks, traffic signal controllers, parking lots, bus shelters, and more. Fiber will also be strategically deployed to light poles in high-traffic pedestrian areas such as Santa Monica Boulevard, Sunset, Beverly, Robertson, San Vicente, Melrose, Fairfax, La Brea to support public Wi-Fi, safety cameras, and other smart city applications. The cost of building this network can range between $45 and $51 million, and the city's contribution can be between $24 and $48 million. Option two is a citywide network to serve residents and businesses as well as limited modernization and expansion of municipal infrastructure. The network would still improve a competitive landscape within the broadband market, but would provide limited municipal infrastructure expansion. The cost of building this network can range between $43 and $48 million, and the city's contribution can be between $21 and $25 million. The city can invest in modernizing any gaps in its own infrastructure at a later date as budget allows. And last option is option three, strategic fiber deployment for residents and businesses designed to reduce project costs and city's financial contribution. This may include savings and risk reduction strategies such as prioritizing network neighborhoods that don't currently have fiber infrastructure, limiting municipal fiber to only the core locations and other value engineering techniques. The network would improve infrastructure and competitive landscape within the broadband market, however, at least initially, the scope would be limited to strategic areas within the city. The cost of building this network is between $40 and $45 million and can reduce city's financial contribution to $20 million. The city can invest in any gaps in its own infrastructure and help bring more neighbors onto the network at a later date as budget allows, or if the network experiences significant success. If the city decided to proceed with any one of these options, staff would seek to firm final amount in the city's contribution as well as explore brand opportunities to reduce, to further reduce city's financial contribution. No matter which option is chosen, the project would employ the latest in network deployment techniques, including micro trenching. Micro trenching involves creating a narrow trench between 2 to 4 inches wide and 12 to 24 inches deep for laying a fiber optic cable. Micro trenching is a cost-effective, efficient, and minimally disruptive technique mandated by State of California to promote broadband proliferation. Crew can install between 800 and 1,000 linear feet of cable a day, roughly equivalent to three to four city blocks. Because the trench is so narrow, and it is much safer than a typical trench, and the road can usually be available to the public the same day, the construction of the network will be done in phases, and it will take 16 to 24 months to complete. And with that, I'm going to hand that over to Joanne to talk about the community benefits.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to talk to you about the reasons for pursuing a project like this under any model, looking at the value of ubiquitous fiber optics in any community. Optical fiber is universally regarded as the Holy Grail of communications infrastructure, the transmission medium with virtually unlimited scalability, meaning capacity to grow in the future to meet any needs that will emerge that are conceivable to any of us in this moment. Optical fiber is not a device. It's not a piece of equipment. It's not like the pieces of equipment we are all looking at and using today that we know will be replaced within a few years. It is instead a transmission medium with a lifetime of many decades and almost infinite capability and scalability as new equipment is attached to it to be able to accommodate those new needs. This is the reason that fiber is sometimes called the tool for future-proofing a city, and it's the reason that so many cities are looking for ways to partner with the private sector to make sure that they have ubiquitous fiber everywhere, not because they don't have good existing broadband infrastructure, they frequently do, but it's not ubiquitous fiber, and there's not competition. So we have two types of benefits that I'd like to talk to you about tonight. The first is right here on the slide, and it has to do with many of the benefits that will be realized by the community at large, the public-facing benefits around competition, and all the benefits that come with competition, including better pricing, different levels of customer service, different kinds of attention for the community that we all know, Economics 101, companies pay more attention to places where they face competition. It also involves a public-facing benefit, as Eugene was just describing, that has to do with benefits for the low-income community, including negotiated free service for low-income housing that has been part of the deal that is under consideration. In addition to that, there are the city's own internal needs, the city's own enterprise services for running its own operations as well as providing certain kinds of services to the public such as free Wi-Fi. So the things that a city does in the ordinary course of things, increasingly more and more using connectivity in that way, would be accommodated through this new partnership, making sure that this infrastructure is available to the city, effectively future-proofing the city's own access to infrastructure for internal needs as well as providing this future-proof infrastructure to provide services to the public, both in the residential market and in the small business market. And competition, where it emerges, and it has emerged in substantial portions of the country, ubiquitous fiber competing with existing cable broadband networks. Where we have seen competition like that, we see changes in pricing. It materializes in a range of different ways, including that companies that face competition frequently offer specials, all kinds of new packages, and we all know, we can call our internet company and ask for a better deal on our service by suggesting that we might go elsewhere, but we see substantial changes in pricing as well as service differentiation in places where there is competition. What you see on this slide is a relatively simple and very conservative model that applies a conservative assumption around a monthly discount that might be realized in a competitive environment based on what we see in many, many other markets, and then applies it to a certain percentage of consumers at a certain dollar savings per month. And as you can see, that over, over the course of the year, that savings to residential and small business consumers in a community the size of West Hollywood could be quite Part of the reason why this project has emerged and the opportunity that this public-private partnership presents is that West Hollywood is a community that is not particularly fiber-rich in the current moment. This is not a slam against any existing provider. They are excellent companies, and they operate very capable networks where they have those networks, but neither of the existing wireline incumbent networks is fiber. It is not fiber all the way to the home and business, and the fiber that has emerged is in select parts of the city, in our estimation probably less than 20%. It's reported to the Federal Communications Commission, self-reported by the companies, as slightly over 20%, but we think it's actually lower than that because it doesn't take into account that each multi-dwelling building has multiple units that should be counted as units rather than as a single location. What this means also is that given that we live in an environment currently where federal money is building fiber in rural areas and private dollars are emerging in a market-oriented way to build fiber in many suburban areas that are low-cost to build, our urban communities are the ones that are struggling to have private dollars come in and build, and of course, in urban communities, we are not eligible for federal money that is subsidizing rural broadband where there is no broadband currently. That's because we have broadband here. We have some broadband. We just don't have fiber everywhere, and we don't have the same kind of competitive environment as other communities do. I am from suburban Washington, DC, where Verizon built fiber to the premises everywhere 20 years ago. We have multiple providers. We have that level of competition. We have a different picture with regard to both competition and pricing, and that is true in New York, New York suburbs, Boston, Seattle, San Francisco, Dallas, suburban Chicago, parts of urban Chicago, and so on. But the urban areas are the places where this is most challenging. Most urban communities that have been able to build and develop ubiquitous fiber have done so in collaboration with the private sector. The markets haven't done it themselves. There's had to be some kind of community effort to encourage, enhance, and attract that private capital. So as a final set of thoughts around the benefit of ubiquitous fiber everywhere, I will say that what we see as dynamics with regard to fiber is that, for me as an empty nester, I don't need the kinds of speeds every day that a symmetrical gigabit will deliver to my home. When I had two teenagers in the house, I actually needed quite a bit than I was able to get much of that time. And in my small technology company in our offices, we absolutely need that kind of speed. We have a fiber connection. We have used it. We need it, and we benefit from it because of the kind of very high bandwidth, symmetrical, not just in the downstream direction, but in the upstream direction as well, needs that we have a community with full economic vitality that is able to attract young families, lots of folks who are working from home, and small businesses that are internet-dependent and connectivity-dependent, and tech businesses and other businesses that really require a lot of bandwidth. This is an infrastructure that benefits them enormously from an economic vitality standpoint. And I will stop there. Thank you.
And I'm going to wrap this up. In conclusion, all three options align with city's core values by aiming to enhance the city's broadband infrastructure, ensure equitable access, promote economic development, and prepare West Hollywood for future smart city applications. Staff's recommendations, option one, a truly transformative citywide network that modernizes city's infrastructure and ensures that every residence and business has access to state-of-the-art broadband network capable of meeting growing demands for decades. This project would position West Hollywood as a forward-thinking leader in closing the digital divide, enhancing technological resiliency, and fostering stronger, more diverse local economy. Staff recommendations approving tentative high-level design, including city's anticipated $24 to $28 million, $24 to $28 million financial contribution to implement option one, a public-private partnership for a citywide network. Direct staff to negotiate the final terms of the implementation agreement with Plenary and return to City Council final approval of the agreement. Thank you. That concludes our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. I'm going to begin on the side of the table. Councilmember Erickson, are you ready to begin?
Yeah. Thank you so much for a very robust staff report and ongoing conversations around this. So I have a couple of questions.
This project would position West Hollywood as a forward-thinking leader in closing the digital divide, enhancing technological resiliency and fostering stronger, more diverse local economy. Staff recommendations approving tentative high-level design, including city's anticipated $24 to $28 million financial contribution to implement option one, a public-private partnership for a citywide network. Direct staff to negotiate the final terms of the implementation agreement with Plenary and return to City Council final approval of the agreement. Thank you. That concludes your presentation, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. I'm going to begin on the side of the table, Councilmember Erickson, are you ready to begin?
Yeah. Thank you so much for a very robust staff report and ongoing conversations around this. So, I have a couple of questions. There is a significant financial investment from taxpayers here, but is there any guaranteed return on investment as a result of this?
There's certainly a significant investment and we don't take it lightly at all. I know this project kind of started from kind of nothing and here we are at a significant ask. So, the return on investment from city's perspective is not necessarily a financial but more a kind of community benefit, primarily in the way that we need to modernize our infrastructure. Our current fiber, our current traffic network along anything outside of Santa Monica Boulevard is running on infrastructure that's like decades old, right? So those investments have to be made. So we're basically taking our need to invest into this infrastructure and then adding it on top of a private investor to make all of this work not only for the benefit of the city, but also for the benefit of the community. And so, in that regard, there's a guarantee, so as soon as this stuff is in the ground, we're going to benefit. As far as financial benefit or guarantees, I don't know, maybe I could ask our partners to come up and answer this question, they have, they're going to have over $20 million in this game and as a kind of private investor, I don't think they're going to do this, take this lightly with their kind of investment committee. So, I don't think I answered your question if there's guarantees of a return on investment, but I think the private partners are comfortable enough with moving forward with this project.
Sure, so I guess I ask this for two purposes, and this is my second question, yep, is that our own small-scale pilot program went from $2 million to $19 million, so there's already a likely cost underestimates. However, after we would get this back, the ROI, in my opinion, well, not opinion yet because we're not there, is technology that is 30 years old, so what throughout the 30-year contract or investment in this way is being done? So over the 30 years, every five years, is it being updated, what's the process?
Great question. So, as Joanne pointed out, fiber itself is a medium that will last 30 years or more and its limitations, technical limitations have not been discovered yet. Every time in lab, we hear about more and more data being pushed through the fiber. You're absolutely correct, you do have to upgrade things that fiber connects, let's say, computers, network equipment, and so this will be within the preview of our partners to maintain their network and for it to be competitive and to meet their service-level agreements with the city and its customers, to maintain the uptime, and so, yes, they would have to maintain their network to meet kind of industry best practices, so they're competitive.
But what benchmarks are in place? So like, the first year this is happening, the second year this happens, I mean, none of us will be here in 30 years, that's fine, we'll hopefully be here, you know, physically, you know, but like, none of us will be here in that way, so we are essentially saying, hey, council, in 30 years from now, have some outdated technology, I hope, I don't know, what benchmarks are in place?
So, the contracts that staff is hoping to negotiate would be for a public-private partnership in which Plenary would have obligations to certain kinds of performance outcomes and to engineering best practices. Most of my team is engineers. An adequate set of contracts that, you know, we would be in a position to recommend would have very clear performance parameters for upgrades and updates on the equipment front throughout that time period, depending on what kind of equipment it is, whether it's at the home or outside in the right-of-way or in the core of the network, then the communications equipment on a fiber network has to be replaced anywhere from every five to 12 years, and they would have obligations to do exactly that and to stay current with best-in-class services in the industry and in markets comparable to West Hollywood. That would be the base need of any kind of contract like this. The fiber itself is the core investment and the most expensive part of this and the hardest part for anyone to do, that is a multi-decade asset, as long as it is well taken care of and maintained well, and that obligation would also fall to the private partner, to maintain it, to repair it, to meet all kinds of industry standards, that asset is a very long-term asset, it doesn't get replaced on a frequent cycle, that is the value, that's why we use the term "future-proof" to refer to fiber.
Wonderful, because I know my colleagues probably have questions. If we wanted to provide broadband though to low-income residents, we could do bulk pricing, correct?
We could do bulk pricing, and I think that was one of the responses to the RFP, the original RFP was for Spectrum, they offered a what is called bulk pricing, I use it in my HOA, I'm on the board of my HOA. The reason we, the reason we decided not to, that that proposal wasn't, didn't provide enough value for the city, for several reasons. First is, that bulk agreement was only for non-existing customers, right? So somehow, we had to figure out who is currently non-Spectrum customer. Number two, the caveat was, it could not have required any construction on their part, so their network had to already have been there. So anybody who's not served by Spectrum wouldn't benefit from that. And last but not least, the city would have to pay Spectrum for, let's say, a thousand potential bulk customers, but their, the administration of getting that money back for the city would be on the city. And let's say, a unit was a bulk customer and there was nobody living in that unit for a month, we would still have, the city would still have to pay Spectrum, even though nobody was using their service. So this wasn't very attractive, I didn't feel like it was moving the needle, kind of...
Just, but we have a rental registry.
I understand that, yeah, but just in general administration of this whole bulk agreement, it didn't improve broadband infrastructure, it didn't improve competition, it just served mainly, you know, one provider.
Great, and my last question is, I've done some research on this, and Burlington, Vermont and Provo, Utah have lost tens and tens of millions of dollars on this. What makes this proposal different from those proposals? Because when I was reading them subsequently, I wasn't seeing much difference. The City Council of Burlington and Provo, when they adopted these things, were pretty much being sold almost a replicative version with some tweaks, so I'm confused as to what makes this different, what makes this so different?
I'll start and let Joanne finish because she sees a ton of them, I got to say, I'm not familiar with those projects, but we are a unique city. We're a small city, we're affluent city, and they're very dense, and being small and very dense is very attractive for these businesses. And so this definitely makes us more likely not different than those other examples you mentioned. Joanne, do you want to add?
Yes, Councilmember, it's a very good question. Both Provo and Burlington were municipal networks, they were designed, built, financed, owned and operated by the city in that case, and 100% of all the construction risk and the market risk sat with the city. Both of those networks ran into financial trouble and had to sell at a substantial discount, particularly in the case of Provo, which sold the network for a dollar to Google Fiber. In the case of Burlington, actually, they sold, not without loss, but at a considerably higher price. What is, what is being contemplated here is not municipal broadband, there is no contemplation of the city holding all that risk, operating the network, maintaining the network, offering services under its own name. The whole idea of the public-private partnership and the contracts that staff is asking to be able to negotiate is to shift much of that risk over to the private partner, where the city has a defined contribution and the contribution is only that amount, and the city knows that the balance of construction and market risk would sit with a private entity for exactly the reason you note, which is that there is considerable risk associated with financing, owning and operating a network by a city and not all cities are well-suited to do it. There are many that have done it successfully, but those two are among the ones that have not.
Thank you.
We do have a public commenter signed up to speak, so I can allow you to ask questions if you can keep it to questions, if that's okay, or we can go to the public comment? Do you have a question? Let's take the public comment and then we'll come back to the rest of the discussion. So I have Elliot Jameson signed up to speak on behalf of Plenary.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, my name is Elliot Jameson, I'm a senior vice president of Plenary Americas, the city's partner in developing this fiber network as Eugene's been describing. I wanted to just add a couple of comments. First, about our company, Plenary Americas is a specialist in developing public-private partnerships, all of our projects are with public-sector entities, and we build and operate infrastructure assets that range from transportation, transit assets to communication infrastructure. A common theme among those projects is that we are committing to on-time, on-budget delivery and to a fixed set of performance metrics, and we would commit to those as part of this project and invest our own capital behind it. We currently work throughout North America, manage over $15 billion in assets in total, this includes three fiber network, public-private partnerships that are for middle-mile projects along with Departments of Transportation and will also serve telecom carriers, including fiber-to-the-home carriers. A couple points about the project, over the last year-plus, we've developed a detailed plan for implementation, we've gotten feedback from multiple engineering and construction firms and have evolved our estimates and our projections for the network on that basis. Some of the key benefits have been covered already and involve the network that would serve both municipal assets, low-income housing and individual residents and businesses, and create more competition in the community in that way. I would be happy to answer any further questions if you would like and can delve into many of the topics that have just been being discussed and would love the opportunity to do so. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hing, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I wanted to thank Manager Sefes and Ms. Joanne for this presentation. I know that it has a long time coming, this was from a previous council that I was not part of, but I do appreciate all the work that went into it, this is a new council For either one of you, why is this agreement needed now? Because the city paused the extension of the fiber backbone along Sunset, Fairfax, Fountain and La Brea, connecting to the existing fiber on Santa Monica, but the project's bids exceeded over $19 million. The various options being proposed will result in an investment of up to $30 million. Could the city ownership of the infrastructure result in millions of dollars in spending and possibly owning possible obsolete technology? Because 30 years ago, there was no internet, and then if we have fiber optics now, will that carry on?
Yeah, I think we touched on that a little bit already, but I think a decent parallel to fiber infrastructure is electricity, right? So electricity's been around for a long, long time, and those, some of these cables are still in the ground, but what changes is the endpoints, right, is what you plug in. It was a light bulb before, now it's a smart light, a computer, a microwave or whatnot. And so, fiber itself is the, is the, is the prize, that's the typically barrier to entry. Investing into fiber is barrier to entry into the market for most internet service providers, and so it is certainly not something that's going to lose value over, you know, next 30 years.
And if my colleagues will indulge me, I have a couple more questions. And are there any other cities in the US that have implemented a similar approach with the proposed vendor, with a similar approach? And I know that our neighbor in Beverly Hills has implemented a very similar type project that, from what I understand, went south where they had to sell it for pennies on the dollar.
Sure, I'll take the Beverly Hills part and then maybe you could speak. So actually, in preparation with this, I spoke to the director of IT in the city of Beverly Hills, and so you are correct, that project, I didn't know that they sold it or not, but I knew that project was initially approved, fiber-in-the-home, but later put on pause. Their project was different than ours, it wasn't a public-private partnership, it was city, city, city construction project, I believe city-funded, which is a very key nuance for what we're doing, we're certainly reducing cities' risks. The other component, the big component of why their project is on pause is because, to make financial sense for them, their project was designed to use aerial fiber, meaning fiber not on the ground, fiber on the poles, and we received one of these proposals during our RFP, and we, I'm recommending, staff recommended with consultants' help, not to move forward with that because we're trying to underground things, we're trying to keep this infrastructure resilient, right, because, you know, poles get knocked down, they're susceptible to fires, earthquakes, underground infrastructure is way more resilient to those things. So, their project, and the other big component is, they could not get access from utility companies to the poles, even though they have the right to get to the poles, they, they just couldn't do it in an efficient manner to make the project go, and so they had to pause their project, they did all of the fiber undergrounding already. I don't know if you drive on the north side of Beverly Hills, kind of north of Sunset, you'll see a lot of cameras, you'll see a lot of kind of safety equipment, all of that is fed by that fiber they installed. And Joanne, do you want to?
Yes, Councilmember, this, this public-private partnership approach is a somewhat pioneering approach. Beverly Hills, like the other cities that have been mentioned, had a fully municipal approach, and for many years, in the early years of the internet, for cities and counties and towns that really wanted to improve their internet infrastructure and improve their economic vitality as part of it, improve competition, they really had only that option, it was either leave it to the private sector or build a fully municipal network. What has emerged in recent years has been public-private collaboration, of which this would be a relatively unique approach, where the cost overrun issue would be mitigated through negotiation of a defined dollar figure and then acceptance of any risk above that cost by the private partner for exactly the reason you note around cost overruns, including in inflationary and very challenging times. And there has been considerable inflation in the fiber-to-the-home industry over the past five years, it's been extraordinary, probably about 30%. What we've seen emerge over those years though, as communities have looked for alternatives to just full municipal risk or just waiting for the private sector to do it, which happens in some places but not in others, is that many communities have used their spending power, their buying power, and dollars that they might have had, in many cases using ARPA, local fiscal recovery dollars, to make a grant on a competitive basis to a company that made a commitment that it would build this infrastructure, in some places, in places where there was no internet, in other places as a competitive network. And companies like Spectrum and AT&amp;T and Comcast have been very favorable toward that model in many communities, seeking out these kinds of partnerships where they accept funds in return for making commitments to build networks. Win-win situations because the idea is that the community gets the network that it is seeking and the private sector gets the, a capital contribution that makes it more economically attractive for them to build something that otherwise would be challenging. So this is not outside of the norm, but it is somewhat pioneering in applying public-private partnership structures to broadband. It's relatively new in the United States, extensively used in Asia and Europe, but they use P3s much more in Asia and Europe than we do in all internet, in all infrastructure classes, not just internet.
Thank you. So would we be the first city to actually undergo a project like broadband for these community, or, I didn't catch it, you said, if there was another city that...
Well, I mean, in the current moment, half of the suburbs of Raleigh-Durham are using this model, the city of Memphis is using this model.
But are, but is Plenary administering those models?
I don't believe that Plenary is the partner.
So this would be the first that Plenary is doing, we have no method of success to measure it against, is that kind of what I'm understanding?
I, I can't speak to Plenary doing this on a last-mile basis. Plenary, to my knowledge, has three middle-mile networks, one with the state of Pennsylvania, one with the state of North Carolina, and I believe a third one with the state of Georgia. And as part of negotiations, presumably staff would look at all of that, but I don't believe they have a broadband project with the city, I, but I actually can't speak to that, I think I would have to defer to them.
Great, and then city manager, may I ask you a question? How many capital projects does a city of West Hollywood have pending at this time? How many capital projects does the city of West Hollywood have pending at this time?
I don't have the exact number. It would be a guess. But we do have an update coming with the priorities discussion in a couple of weeks. It is well over 20 that we have on the list right now when we're talking about major capital projects. I'm assuming that's what you're talking about, not our routine capital improvements.
And with as many capital projects that our city has, what will be the impact of adding another project of this magnitude to the projects and to staff time?
So certainly, every project has an impact on staff. I think when we're talking about staff time, this project would be administered by our IT department, by Eugene, as opposed to some of our other capital improvement projects that are administered either through our Facilities and Field Services Division or our property development, our urban design. So there's definitely an impact, but it's a different division than some of the other ones. Certainly, when we talk about dollars, I mean, I think what's being proposed here is 21 to 28 million, or is it 21, 28? Or 24 to 28. That is money that would come from our reserves at this point or from some of our bond funding. But off the top of my head, I don't know if we have bond funding available. So it would be, come from the reserves, which means we wouldn't use it for other capital projects.
Thank you. And then, you know, I mentioned this earlier, and given the current economic uncertainty with this administration, cutting funds left and right, with recently implemented tariffs and continuing rise of inflation, I mean, I'm not, is this the appropriate time to commit to such an expenditure?
It's a tough question for me to answer, a staff. But depending on what happens, it certainly can help kind of some of the people that could be most affected by these economic downturns, right? So from that perspective, it's a yes. But obviously, you guys are the kind of the policymakers, and that's one of the questions that you have to answer.
I appreciate your time for indulging me. Thank you.
Councilmember Meister.
Thank you. So we have this already on Santa Monica Boulevard, right? And so can you tell us how, how is that working for us?
So we have fiber optic infrastructure along Santa Monica Boulevard. It doesn't serve the public in terms of broadband, but it connects all of our traffic cabinets along from Dahini to La Brea. It connects, I can't remember the number, a bunch of Wi-Fi access points that serves the public, provides free Wi-Fi. It certainly connects all of our city facilities with ultra-fast reliable connection. It, it allows us to have a secondary data center at the ARC where all of our data is replicated so that in case something happens in City Hall, we can continue operating and recover quickly from the ARC.
So my question is, are you happy with it so far?
I am happy, but honestly, it serves more our traffic engineering department by connecting their cabinets. So right now, we're working on bus priority program. It exists right now by using this wireless point-to-point links that are unreliable and kind of unsightly. And so when that was initially implemented, there was no fiber, but now we do have it. And so as I think LA County or LA Metro is refreshing that, they were excited to hear that we have this fiber network that could just plug and play for that. And so, yeah, we are, we are very happy with this project. We're hoping to make it more resilient, to create more loops so in case something gets cut in Santa Monica, the signal could go through Sunset or whatnot, so.
So as a resident, how does that work for me? Let's say we move ahead with this and, and I want to use their services. How, how does that work?
Yeah, so they are, the partner will be responsible for commercializing and selling the service. So I would imagine they would, maybe that's a better answer by the partner.
Please come, yeah, please come.
But they would, they would hire a consulting, an Internet service provider to run this network, that would do all the marketing that you see from Spectrum and AT&amp;T. They would come and call them, they would come and build it for you, and so.
So we'll let him.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you.
So, you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand the question. So I would...
Ms. Ralia, can you speak directly into the mic so we can pick you up a little bit better?
Sure.
Thank you.
Ah, this is better? Yep.
We'll see.
Okay. So I would differentiate between a couple of levels. So our company would operate the infrastructure, and we have an operations and maintenance provider, Bonfire Infrastructure, who has a 24-by-7 network operations center that would provide all the monitoring of the fiber infrastructure. Part of the idea of this project is that it would be an open-access network, and so more than one Internet service provider would operate over the network. So we are not ourselves an Internet service provider, and multiple providers, two to three probably initially, would operate, and they have their own customer service, and there would be a portal that would be created where you could go and see the offerings, pricing, speed, other characteristics of the offerings from each of them, choose which one to access, and then they would interact with you directly, send a router to your home and get you hooked up, send a person out if necessary to do so. And so the direct customer interaction would be with one of those Internet service providers who is operating on top of our network, and we're operating the physical infrastructure.
So the connection is basically the same then in terms of like coming from the telephone pole or, because I'm just trying to imagine the...
Yeah, it would run from the side of your house that would be connected to the fiber, which would then run through the public right-of-way back to one of our central offices. The plan is for two central offices in the city, and those would be connected through leased fiber back to the main data centers in downtown L.A. and elsewhere. And so the Internet service providers would interconnect with our network at those central offices. And so the signal would be carried from the person's home, over our network, interact at those central offices, and connect back to the Internet with one of those Internet service providers.
Are there any security issues that would be different with, with this versus the standard?
Not substantially different. Each one of those Internet service providers has their security protocols, like they operate elsewhere, and our operations and maintenance provider does similarly in the networks that they operate. So that's certainly something that would be addressed.
My, my other question is about the micro trenching. So how, I mean, I'm just going to say, when Edison did trenching through on a public right-of-way, they literally went through the sewer line, you know, and they did it like down the whole block. How do we avoid that? How do you avoid that?
Right. So it's part of the reason for doing micro trenching. So the micro trenching is at a depth of 14 to 18 inches. The requirements that are in place is that we would go down to a depth of 18 inches with 14 inches of cover over top of it. And the reason for that depth is most utilities are sort of three to four feet underground. And so the goal is to go deep enough that we're below the subsurface of the street, but not so deep that it's impacting the other utilities. Now, we would do standard potholing and utility ID beforehand to identify other utilities, and so we would go through that process that everyone's required to go through when you dig. But the idea by being at the depth we're at and using the micro trenching is to minimize those utility conflicts.
And have you found that there are issues created by weather or other things, especially in Southern California, where we don't have as extreme weather as other places?
Yeah, it's a great question, and I'll touch just a little bit if I can on some of Plenary's experiences as well that came up before. Joanne was correct that the existing fiber optic projects are what are called middle-mile projects, so they're operating over longer distances. Those are in interstate highways, and they are primarily using the micro trench method, and we're responsible for the operations of maintenance of those. And so, and they're on the East Coast, so subject to more weather than it is here. And that method has, you know, held up well so far. Caltrans is using it in some of their middle-mile projects. So it's certainly an issue, but it's part of the reason for going the depth below the street surface is to minimize any of those impacts and ensure the long-term maintainability.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Heilman, if you'd like to weigh in.
Just a question. When we went out with requests for proposals, how many companies responded?
We got four responses.
And what companies responded?
So Plenary responded, Spectrum Enterprise responded, Sonic, Sonic Network responded, and there was one more, SoFi Networks. And I can describe each proposal for you briefly if you want.
No, that's fine. I know that Spectrum has been lobbying against this now, but I think it's, I guess, interesting that they actually submitted in response to the requests. And obviously, you're not recommending them, which is probably why they're lobbying against this. The other question, and maybe it's for the Plenary representative again, I'm not really technically that savvy, but it sounds like once we install this broadband, then any of the existing companies would be able to utilize it and continue to provide services here?
Absolutely. Any service provider can be a partner eventually in this, on this network if they choose to do so. And so theoretically, Spectrum can get on this network, use this fiber to continue to provide their services, and compete with kind of the rest of the, the rest of the companies that could be on this network.
Okay. And then I guess maybe this is a comment or a question for the City Manager. You raised the issue of bonds. This seems like a project, if we do go forward with it, it's an investment, and it's like any other capital improvement, we usually pay for that over time by bonding against future revenues. So why wouldn't we do that here?
So it is one of the project's potential projects that we identified when we did our last bond issue. So if there's funds available from those bonds, we could certainly use those bonds. We haven't looked at doing another bond issue right now, just based on the market conditions and where things are. But if it were to make sense at the time, we're not going to pay $20 million next week if you all approve that. We're going to pay that over time. And so if there becomes a time when there makes sense to issue bonds, we certainly could do that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. My questions largely were related to what the open-market access would look like and what providers would be. And I think Vice Mayor covered that really well. And then if I had a second question, it would be related to our purview on the Budget Subcommittee. And so I appreciate you asking that question also, Vice Mayor. I will say that I think I'm very largely in support of this, and I'll just sort of kick the conversation in that direction now. I've gotten many of the sort of fear-mongering talking points from some of the competition out there. But I really think in forecasting what the future looks like, you've really hit the nail on the head in that, you know, the work economy really depends on access to broadband, and it's a city's responsibility to whatever extent it can to provide that sort of essential infrastructure to its residents. That this is also a cost-saving model for future residents is really exciting and appealing. As we know, costs are rising for people in their households daily, and the cost of doing work to make up for that difference is sort of always growing as well, so that this is something that can change that for our residents is really exciting. I think we're also in a moment where the profit models of corporations are largely standing to grow in tremendous ways. And so that we're looking at a public-private partnership that guarantees service delivery to our residents, consumers in this way for beyond the next decade is really magnificent. If we look at other, you know, organizations or places that we're a part of, Clean Power Alliance jumps to mind so quickly. We deliver, we create immense amounts of clean power, but our ability to deliver that to households without the transmission lines as they currently exist were limited. We're working in this private partnership model and conversations now across the state of California on how the state can find its own transmission lines in the future. So I see this in sort of a similar way, that the city is owning some more of that infrastructure that will, as you said, its capacity has been unlimited to date, and I think that's really exciting. I know there's questions or concerns about what the future of technology looks like. And as far as you've explained it today, and as far as we can see in this crystal ball of ours, it really seems like this fiber model is what is meeting that demand and that need. And in a market like ours or in a city like ours, that is, you know, a very proud smart city, we have a program on smart city adaptation, our bus shelters, you named it, or, sorry, the many public safety technologies that we're looking to invest rely on this technology as well. It seems like a very wise investment that we would make. And I know the conversation's been underway for some time, so I appreciate the way you've also continued to moderate the times and make sure that we're getting the best valued opportunity out of whatever private partnership we engage in. I also just think that this private-public partnership model itself, this P3, you hear it a lot, I think it's a really exciting way for us to think about this. And in seeing some of the failures of other cities, I would say bold initiatives that didn't quite work out, and I'm sure they would too, but ultimately, the failure that they had to sell off those markets to something else. Looking at something like this, to me, is the sort of future-proofing that we need to make sure that there's a shared investment in what we're creating for our city. I'm thrilled about this. I think it is as innovative and as needed as you've described. And I think while it's a shame that the community hasn't been able to wrap their heads around it, we hardly have also been able to. I think you've named, you know, technology is really challenging. A lot of this language I've been looking up in real time or in the many conversations we've had. But what I think the, the note, or the note that our community should really understand is that insofar as the city is able to invest in infrastructure upgrades, this is such a significant one. And so I really appreciate that, and I will be looking to see what opportunities we have to bond this out so we can make sure that the revenue investment that we're making is also measured amongst our many priorities. So I put it out on the table for myself, that's where I'm at, but I want to see, I know I'm the only one who's sort of commented and deliberated at once. Councilmember Erickson, do you want to jump back in?
Yeah, this is a question for our City Manager. Where is this capital project in the totem pole of priorities? So specifically, I am concerned about what Councilmember Heng was saying, that should there be an economic downturn? Sadly, when there is an economic downturn, this is an infrastructure improvement that, of course, I always want to try and get behind infrastructure improvements. You could, I could wear a billboard that says, oh, billboard, infrastructure improvement, you know. But where is this in the list of priorities of things that would happen? What would be on the chopping block? Where would this come up on that list that we haven't talked about yet?
Yes, so I think when we've talked about our capital improvement projects, priorities list, we've focused on projects in which had an impact on staff. These are infrastructure projects that we are building. In this case, Plenary is going to build the project. It's more of an investment of funds, and then we are managing that contract. So again, as I said before, it does have an impact on staff, but it's our IT staff and not the capital projects team. So it wasn't one that we included on those list of priorities when we've done capital project updates. Again, but there is a financial impact. We did budget, as you didn't talk about earlier, we budgeted $14 million for the city's fiber project that's now been incorporated into this. So that's money that we would have spent regardless or before. So that money was budgeted. So the addition is the difference between those funds at 14 million and whatever that number ends up being, maybe additional 14 million at the 28 million. And so that's something that we'd have to, we haven't put into our budget yet. We'd have to consider, again, whether it's general funds or bonds or how we pay for that. But we'd pay over time, like over, if it takes three years to construct it, we're going to pay as they're constructing it. We're not paying money upfront.
So that leads me to my second question. What is the timeline to get this done? Because as we all know, when we talked last meeting, Beverly Boulevard, you know, we're not seeing that until 2027, right? Maybe later, sorry, but that's the way the world works sadly. But this project, if it doesn't happen until 2027, 2028, the technology that they were supposed to pay for now is already outdated by four years. So what is that price differential that's going to come back on us as a city to have to spend millions of more dollars into a project that seems to be aging as we delay projects, getting them done? I mean, what is the average timeline of a capital project in the city of West Hollywood?
I'm going to let Eugene answer that, because again, this is not a project that we are constructing, so we wouldn't have that number.
I'm not saying that, but we don't construct billboards, we don't construct housing, we don't construct things, and we are still dealing with projects that have taken five to seven years before they can even get up to here as a city council. So, you know, yes, Plenary, great, you want to build this, I'll see you when I retire when you guys are finally putting a shovel in the ground. I mean, that's kind of how I'm viewing this at the moment. But, and Eugene, you're a staff of five, six?
Six.
Six? I mean, so the, it's a lot.
Absolutely, it's a lot, but I think I could address some of these things. So the project will be done in phases. And we're actually, if this is approved, we're looking to align this project with the design district project so that we're not digging twice, so that we're not disturbing the ground twice. We're certainly going to get the economies of scale, because once again, the ground's going to be open. So we're putting infrastructure for this project and that project. So certainly, some portions of this project are going to have to wait, or we're hoping they wait for the design district. Once again, I think it's just a smart decision not to dig twice. But the major, the big portion of the project, the goal is to do it between 16 to 24 months. And our private partner is also very interested in getting this, this investment to start generating revenue as soon as possible. So it's important for them to start, you know, to complete this project. So 16 to 24 months is where they want to complete, let's say, the entire city, not including the design district area that's waiting for that project to complete. Did I answer all that? Also, we're-
I have comments. I mean, I think you know where I'm going on my opinion of this project, but that's it.
Councilmember Hang, did you have questions or comments you wanted to elaborate on? You are allowed to do whatever you'd like right now.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you again for the robust presentation. You know, I understand the need. I guess I'm just kind of in a quandary, because we're in such an uncertain economic time with rising inflation and rising tariffs, programs are being cut. I mean, I am of the mindset to spend our money judiciously. You know, we're trying to build up our reserves in the city. And I would love to put money that's going to be cut from programs, such as HIV testing, prevention, and treatment, our unhoused services, food equity, reproductive medicine, trans medicine, to uplift our social services program. And my biggest fear is, are we paying for a typewriter? What's going to be possibly outdated later on? I'm not sure. I understand the need for connectivity, which I'm not debating, because we all need it, right? And I appreciate it. But is this ready for primetime now, in such an uncertain time, when other programs can be cut? And I'm just saying this, you know, just deliberating with my colleagues. And that's kind of where I'm at. And, you know, it was 20 million, now it's 24 to 28 million, and probably will be much more than that, who knows, with rising costs and inflation. And, you know, I'm of, I'm not sure this is ready for primetime. And I'm of the belief where we let the big business take care of the data, I'd rather use that money to build more housing, make our streets safer for all. And, yeah. And we revisit this later when the economy is better, and there's a little bit more certainty. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. I would just like to revisit some of the ideas that were shared, because I don't think this is a typewriter that we're investing in. I do think that this is the infrastructure that allows for our community members to connect to broadband in ways that alleviate cost burdens in their households for the future. I understand that our residents are already widely connected to the internet, but the lack of competition has only forced escalating costs in households, and that is a responsibility we have to maintain. I also think that we're not in a, in a sort of competition mindset. We're not talking about, you know, service, HIV funding or services versus private-public partnership for Plenary Broadband. We just heard from our city manager that there was already $14 million invested towards it, and that this can be phased out over time. And on tonight's agenda, we're also issuing an RFP for our social service programs. I don't think those things are competitive. I understand the concern around priorities and the concern around limited finances. And this is a project that a city like ours, with all of the infrastructure and technology that we're constantly bringing to it, and the base of residents, and people who come into our city who rely on technology need and have, should have an ability to depend on our city for really great services in this way. I think that this is going to cost our city a lot more money if we wait to do something like this down the road. And I appreciate what Eugene has raised, as the critical opportunity to parallel this work alongside the city's upgrades on, or on Melrose specifically. That itself will be another point of cost that we will, that will increase down the road. So those are some of the immediate responses I have to your concerns, because I just, I don't think that this is something we can actually wait on. I think that we will be really remiss if we wait on this and come back around. Councilmember Meister?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually think your presentation convinced me that this is a good thing for our city. I really do. And even though I live in West Hollywood West, and we're going to be the ones who are last on the list because of the Beverly Boulevard streetscape project, but I think that in order for our city to keep moving forward, we need to, we need to be balanced in our approach. We can't just be focused only on this, or this, or this. We have to take into consideration all of this. This type of infrastructure could be helpful in the medical field. And we have Cedars-Sinai growing all around us. And that's, that's the kind of thing that Cedars-Sinai needs to move forward with research and everything else that they're doing, especially when they're challenged by limited federal funding. So meanwhile, this council just approved a billboard that's going to bring in, I don't know, 20 million, whatever. You know, I think, I think the city can make that commitment to do this, because there will always be something, you know, shinier and better around the corner. But meanwhile, we're going to just sit here and, and do nothing, then, then we'll never, ever see that. So I think that we do have to take this step. I was, I actually was thinking, oh, this is so much money, I don't know, whatever. But you really convinced me that this is the right thing to do. So I will be voting for it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hellman, did you want to?
Yeah. Thank you, and thank you for all of the time. When this item first came to us several months ago, I was very inclined to vote no, simply because it's a lot of money. And I'll admit, I didn't fully understand what was being proposed and what the benefit was. But I reached out to other people and did some research, and I have a much better understanding of it. And as the mayor said, this is really an investment in our future and the future of our residents and the future of our businesses. I still have concerns about the financial impact. I would like to see us explore how we finance this, whether it's through bonding. There was a mention that Plenary will be generating revenue, whether there's an opportunity for revenue sharing as part of the agreement, because if the city is investing a lot of money, and there is a much higher return than expected, then I think we should benefit from that as well. You know, we are responsible for a lot of infrastructure here. When we work with the county sanitation department to put in sewers, we don't really ask what the return on investment is. That's just part of the infrastructure that we have to provide for our community. Now, broadband wasn't something that was part of our infrastructure in the past, but moving forward, I think it is, and it should be considered part of the infrastructure that we as a city need to invest in. Part of what convinced me was the, the staff report, but also what convinced me very heavily is Spectrum. And I, I'm a Spectrum customer, as everyone is in the city, because they have a monopoly. So why would a company that has a monopoly submit a proposal and then come back and say, this is all wrong, you shouldn't be doing it? If it was all wrong, they shouldn't have submitted a proposal. They should have been criticizing the whole process at that time. But when they weren't recommended, they don't want us to go forward with it, because they view it as threatening their monopoly. And that makes me convinced even more so that we should be doing this. And again, I don't fault Spectrum. They're trying to protect their interests, and I get very good service from them, and I'm, I'm pleased with that service. And if they were to participate in broadband, I would likely continue to be a Spectrum customer. But this is about providing an opportunity for all of the service providers, and it will generate more competition, hopefully drive down costs for our residents and businesses. So I am supportive, but I have concerns about the financing aspects of it. And that's something that, you know, is not completely before us tonight. But I hope that the deal that is cut is a very good one, and I hope our city manager and our finance director and our budget subcommittee can look very carefully at how this will be financed.
Yeah. And we'll, we'll have more information on that once we have an agreement. So when we come back with the actual agreement, we'll have more of a timeline and a better idea. If it's approved, this is approved, then we move forward, we'll have a better idea of how it will be financed long-term.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you so much, and thank you to my colleagues. This has three votes, so I'll be quick. None of us will ever see this program be implemented. We will get complaints from the contractor about how long our city processes are taking, I guarantee you. And when you come to one of us and you email us that staff or something's not working right, I'm going to remind you of this conversation right here and now. I mean, that's just how it works. I mean, I can promise you this will take decades, if not, I can promise you that people watching this meeting right now who are texting me, their kids will be through college by the time this program gets fully implemented. And I think that's unfortunate. I just have no faith that this will happen, because Spectrum already is broadband. You can also get coverage from 100% parts in the city. I mean, the maps are there. And frankly, I think this is placing a large burden on staff. I'm sorry if you hear about it every day, and that is not something that we need to continue to do when we have other issues to address. I, I think also this project will be on the chopping block, should there be other aspects in the capital project world that we need to look at holistically. You want to get this in in 18 months? I will, I will eat my words if you actually get that done. Let's start the timer now when the contract gets approved. But I just sadly do not think that this is the right way for the city. We are buying outdated technology. When we get it back in 30 years, and we're going to look, and the council at that time is going to look and say, why did, why did we buy this bag of beans and no beanstalk occurred? And frankly, I think that we're going to have to look at them and say, we sold you a bad deal, and this is a bad deal, a 20-plus million-dollar bad deal, by the way, when we need to be doing other things for infrastructure improvements, like updating our sidewalks and our roads, which haven't been updated in a long time. So those are my comments and feelings. I will be voting no on this item, and wish you the best of luck, and I'll see you when you come back to talk to us in the future.
Councilmember Hang?
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to noteate Council, Vice Mayor Hellman's remarks on Spectrum having a monopoly. They don't, because I don't have Spectrum. I use starry internet. I live in West Hollywood. I know a lot of people in West Hollywood who have AT&amp;T internet, so they don't have monopoly. And I just wanted to speak in terms of the impact on staff, because I, just with my own experience, when constituents have problems with Athens Trash, they don't call Athens Trash. They call City Hall, or they text Councilmember Danny Hang, I need help with my trash can. So then that causes me to contact city staff or to contact the lobbyists at Athens who take care of it. They're not actually calling Athens, which is actually handling that, you know, themselves as part of the, as part of that service. So that's, that's, you know, I see where the wind is blowing on this item, and I do understand and appreciate the fact that we need broadband. Like I said, I'm just not sure if this is ready for primetime. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, the item has a motion and a second.
And to clarify, this is for option one?
Yes. Yes.
Option one.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the discussion.
Those three to two.
Thank you. Motion passes three, two. We have next on our, on our agenda, E2 Commission and Advisory Board appointments and reappointments. I believe we need a break for a few minutes. We will come back at 9:30. We will come back at 9:30. Restarted. All right, as soon as the Vice Mayor is back out here, we will pick up our agenda. Item E2 Commission and Advisory Board appointments and reappointments. And I'll hand this over to our city clerk. Oh, wait, I see we have a couple of comments first. We'll take those and then we'll have our city clerk run through and see what we're ready for tonight. So we have two public commenters signed up to speak. First, we'll see Magnus Mann and then Rick Watts.
Good evening. My name is Magnus Mann, and I have been proud to serve on the Disabilities Advisory Board for the last two years, including on the Disabilities Awareness Month Planning Subcommittee and as this year's vice chair. I'm eager to continue that service, to complete my term as vice chair and carry forward the experiences that I've gained to continuously better serve the community. I want to note that my name was initially not on the agenda item due to some clerical confusion, but not a lack of interest. I confirmed my interest back in January and followed up with the city clerk as soon as I noticed the omission, but I wanted to make sure that my commitment to the DAB was clearly stated. I recognize that some of my positions differ from the council majority, but I speak and act because I care deeply about safety, accessibility, and equity. And I believe that our board should reflect the full spectrum of community voices, not just those that are favorably aligned. I want to be considered based on my contributions to the DAB and West Hollywood's disabled community. I've done my best to serve with dedication and care, including advocating for greater visibility, such as introducing the disability pride flag to our iconography and pushing for a greater online presence, because I believe that with visibility comes awareness and understanding and then change. I bring 20 years of lived experience with invisible disabilities and chronic illnesses and longstanding commitment to advocacy across the spectrum of disability, with particular attention at its intersection with queerness and race. I've seen the barriers that our community faces, and it's my life's passion to break them down. Growing up isolated on the East Coast due to my health and closeted queerness, West Hollywood represented hope. And while we still have work to do to live up to that promised vision of inclusion, I believe that we can get there if we commit to truly hearing and uplifting our marginalized siblings. And I'd be honored to continue that work for the city on the Disabilities Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Watts?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Rick Watts, City of West Hollywood. I'm actually here to advocate for the reappointment of Lee Walkup to the Older Adults Advisory Board. He is not here to speak for himself tonight, which, as you all know, is because he fell and broke his hip a week ago tonight. As you know, Lee has been a longtime fixture in the city of West Hollywood and is just like Mr. Volunteer, doing all kinds of things from the Gay Men's Chorus for almost 40 years to the Older Adults Advisory Board, the Martin Luther King Day of Service for just annually. He's been a delegate to the Democratic National Convention. It's just, he has more than earned this. He helps to get one of his colleagues, Nadia Sutton, who is herself disabled, to and from meetings to that board month in, month out. And I have never known a more generous person, both with his time and his talents. And on top of that, he's a Vietnam veteran, retired Lieutenant Commander of the U.S. Navy. So that's my two cents. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right, back over to you, city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, the item before you is for us to continue the appointment and reappointment process. The first item before you, if the council member is ready, is for Councilmember Hang's direct appointment to the Rent Stabilization Commission.
Thank you, city clerk. After a wonderful discussion, I would like to appoint Adam Bass as my direct appointee.
Thank you very much. And that will be for a term ending February 28th of 2025. So now we will move to the direct appointments on the advisory boards. And the first one is for the Older Adults Advisory Board. Vice Mayor Heilman, are you ready to make that appointment this evening?
Hang on a second. I believe I am. Yes, I'm going to reappoint Nadia Sutton.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And now we will move to direct appointments on the Social Justice Advisory Board. Councilmember Erickson, are you ready to make that direct appointment?
No, I don't, I got to connect with my individual because I don't think that they applied. But if they don't, I'll make it at the next meeting.
Thank you. And we have one more direct appointment, and that is on the Transgender Advisory Board, and that is Councilmember Hang.
Thank you. I would like to appoint Chloe Corcoran.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we will move to the at-large appointments for those commissions and boards where we are fully, where all of the direct appointments have been made already. So we will start with the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission. So I will take nominations for the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission.
I'm ready on this one, but I hope that we can all say if we're not ready, that we'll just hold off on that commission.
Perfect. Do you want to go through all of them first and make that?
We can go through them one by one.
Perfect. Okay, so Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission.
Are we ready here?
Yep.
Okay, great.
I would like to nominate Dan Faltz and Sigourney Gunther.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Carolyn Nagy.
Any other? Okay, so now I will take voice votes. And if you're ready, please give me two names. So Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. Dan and Sigourney.
Thank you. Councilmember Hang.
Gunther Faltz.
Councilmember Meister.
Caroline and Sigourney.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
Dan Faltz and Sigourney Gunther.
Mayor Byers.
Sigourney and Dan.
Perfect. So Dan Faltz and Sigourney Gunther will continue their service on the ACAC for a term ending February 28th, 2027. So now we will move to the Business License Commission. Are we ready for that one? Okay?
I would nominate Anthony Boulain and Kevin Berry.
Yep.
Yep.
Are there any other nominations?
No.
Seeing none, Kevin Berry and Anthony Boulain will continue their service on the Business License Commission for a term ending February 28th, 2027. Okay, are we ready for Historic Preservation Commission?
I'm not.
Okay, so let's go to the next one. Human Services Commission?
I'm ready.
If we have any council members who aren't, we can move that one to the next one. Okay?
I would like to nominate Jimmy Palmieri and Jackie Steele.
Any other nominations?
Yes. Samantha Elbaz.
I would like to nominate Stephen Davis.
Okay. Councilmember Erickson.
Jackie Steele and Jimmy Palmieri.
Councilmember Hang.
Palmieri, Steele.
Councilmember Meister.
Samantha and Jimmy.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
Samantha and Stephen Davis.
Mayor Byers.
Jackie and Jimmy.
So the new appointees to the Human Services Commission are Jimmy Palmieri and Jackie Steele for terms ending February 28th, 2027. Okay, are we ready to do LGBTQ+ Commission? Yes? Okay. I will take nominations.
I would nominate Chiedo and Alex White.
Took the words out of my mouth.
I'm sorry, one more time?
Chiedo and Alex White.
Chiedo Ogobenway and Alex.
Chido, sorry.
Okay, any others? Seeing none?
They're very good applications. We just want, I just would like to say on the record, this was very hard.
Thank you. So we will let all of the applicants know this was a tough one. So Chiedo Ogobenway and Alec White will continue their service on the LGBTQ+ Commission for a term ending February 28th, 2027. So now we will move to Planning Commission.
I'm not ready.
You're not ready for planning? Okay. Let's do Public Facilities Recreation and Infrastructure.
I'm not ready for this one.
Okay. Public Safety Commission?
I'm also not ready, sorry.
We can't do rent stabilization tonight because we just finished that one. Transportation and Mobility?
What do you mean, we can't do it?
Well, we can if everyone's ready, but it wasn't agendized because we still had one direct appointment to do.
Understood. Okay, thank you, sorry.
And so just taking direction from council to the...
No, I was just confused. I was like, wait, what do you mean? Isn't this the time?
Are we ready for Transportation and Mobility? Okay.
Sure.
Do we have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Dan Wenzel and Adam Darvish.
I would like to nominate Jody Litback.
Any other nominations? Okay.
I would like to nominate Jordan Beard and Adam Darvish.
Okay. Seeing no others, Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. Adam Darvish and Dan Wenzel.
Councilmember Hang.
Beard, Darvish.
Councilmember Meister.
Jody Litback and Dan Wenzel.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
Jody Litback and Dan Wenzel.
Mayor Byers.
Dan Wenzel, Jordan Beard.
So Dan Wenzel has enough. So Dan is one, and then we'll redo nominations.
Can we hold this until the next meeting?
Do you want to hold the other seat until the next one? Okay, so for now, Dan Wenzel is reappointed for a term ending to 28th of 27. So we will move to our advisory board. And we are ready with the Disabilities Advisory Board. If the council is ready, I do want to clarify for members of the public that we are reducing the at-large appointments for the boards from four to two. So if we are ready, we can proceed.
I'm ready.
Okay, so I'll take nominations?
Disabilities.
Are you ready?
I would like to nominate David Nash and Wesley Schwartz.
I would like to nominate Rick Watts.
I'd like to nominate Magnus Mann.
I'd like to nominate David Nash and Rick Watts.
Any other nominations? No? Okay. Councilmember Erickson.
David Nash and Wesley Schwartz.
Councilmember Hang.
Nash and Watts.
Councilmember Meister.
Watts and Mann.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
Rick Watts and David Nash.
Mayor Byers.
Rick Watts and Wesley Schwartz.
So the next appointees are David Nash is reappointed and Rick Watts is reappointed to the two at-large seats for a term ending February 28th, 2027. Okay, so now we will move to the Russian Speaking Advisory Board. Are we ready to do that one tonight?
No, I'm not ready.
No? Okay. I'm not ready?
And may I ask, Madam Mayor? In the past, Tatiana has been able to provide updates about the community members as well. I'm familiar with a few of them, but I don't know a couple of them. So maybe we could make sure that we...
Can Tatiana reach out?
Yeah, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
You got it. So I will reach out to Tatiana tomorrow and get her feedback and share it with the council. We're not ready for social justice yet. We're not ready for Transgender Advisory Board, Women's Advisory Board. Are we ready for that one this evening?
I am not.
No? Okay. So that concludes the item. We'll come back again at our Cinco de Mayo Council meeting on May 5th. And hopefully we will be almost done at that point.
We're way ahead of schedule.
Melissa, will you let people know who weren't appointed, what additional vacancies are available? Because, you know, by shortening or reducing the size, we're losing some really talented people, and maybe there are other spots we can slot them into.
Okay, yes, I will do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Meister? City Clerk, I believe at the last meeting, we discussed the Transgender Advisory Board, how we can possibly look to recruit more individuals to apply? Because I know that that board has been having some issues.
So we have one individual who was recently appointed to the Transgender Advisory Board, Sidney Rogers, who worked at the LGBT Center. And she's a great resource, and she also is on the County Transgender Advisory Board. So I can ask her if she's aware. There is one individual who was brought to my attention that I'm going to reach out to about applying. And we can look at advertising somewhere to see if we can get additional interest. But in the past, that hasn't garnered us, especially if we're trying to find someone in West Hollywood, that's been challenging. So I think those two options for now are a good place. But if the council has any suggestions, I'm open to that as well.
I would reach out to the LA County LGBTQ Commission to see what their applicant pool was like. I know they received a lot of individual applications. So perhaps their executive director could help.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Item E3, an update on the implementation round two of the Sunset Arts and Advertising Program.
I can actually give a very brief staff report. Jennifer Alkire and Paige Portwood are here as well on the item. What's before the council tonight is a resolution rescinding the Design Excellence Committee's screening process and authorizing all round two applicants to proceed in applying for a development agreement. Pursuant to the Sunset signage policy, the city created a process for screening applications for a design concept award, and this process was adjusted as necessary for each round of applications. The city also formed a Design Excellence Review Committee comprised of individuals with expertise in design, preservation and outdoor advertising. In September of 2021, the city invited interested parties to submit an application for round two. And the round two Design Excellence screening process gave former applicants that were unsuccessful at receiving an award in round one and 1.5 the opportunity to reapply while also opening the program to any projects along the Sunset Strip that might not have previously applied. The process resulted in 10 applications qualifying for a concept award permitting them to move forward with a development agreement, and 17 applications that did not qualify and were not permitted to apply for a development agreement. Ensuing litigation has raised questions regarding the round two design scoring process and the results. While the city believes that its process was proper, the continued delay of round two of the Sunset Arts and Advertising Program is unnecessary. In light of these issues, there's a resolution before the city council to remove round two screening processes a precondition to application for a development agreement and move forward with allowing all round two applicants the opportunity to enter into a development agreement for billboards on the Sunset Strip. Specifically, staff recommends that the city council rescind the round two Design Excellence screening process, thereby vacating the scores attributed to the Excellence Committee. Additionally, staff recommends the city council allow all applicants who submitted a round two screening application to apply for a development agreement for the locations that were submitted on their submittal back in 2021. If approved, all applicants that submitted a round two screening application will be invited to apply for a development agreement if they apply by January 7, 2026, to the extent these applicants are still interested. As such, the applicants must submit a development agreement application, associate entitlement application and fees, design plans, and a development agreement deposit by January 7, 2026. Staff will then review each application individually once all materials are submitted. So if council is interested in taking this action, there's a resolution before you tonight that will implement all the items mentioned in this report and in the written report in your packet, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Do my colleagues have any questions for the item before us tonight? No questions? Any comments? Any reason we didn't move this to consent?
I guess just to clarify, the way this, if we adopt this proposal tonight, basically all of those people who submit it for that round will be moved on to the second stage, which is they can then submit a request for a development proposal, which would be reviewed like the ones that we've already reviewed.
Under the city's normal process, it just removes the precondition to applying for a development agreement.
All right, thank you. I'm supportive of this.
And I do see we have one speaker who quickly got himself in the queue, Victor Olmachenko. You're up. I know.
Hi, Victor Olmachenko, West Hollywood resident. Well, while I recall community meetings for round one, round two somehow came and went without much fanfare, and now it looks like all previous unapproved applicants can apply directly for development agreements because of some kind of, you know, I try to read behind the lines, but some kind of murky litigation. So lots of litigation going on, it seems to me. Recently, plans for the Lush Weaver's Walk along Melrose were scuttled for a more barren landscape. Talk about wanting to have more green, open space because of litigation. And now this billboard turnabout. Hmm. I guess as long as incisive and dedicated design review is still part of the process, things may turn out okay. But I have to just say that frankly, the way, having been a federal official and having gone through all these kinds of review processes, I was quite impressed by the way that the design screening tool was used. It almost looks like, I don't know, like LSAT scores at a high-level graduate university. So I just am kind of concerned. It seems litigation is driving us. And the other thing is, as long as the design is really looked at for these future billboards. But the other thing is, coming from Motown Detroit, where there was a one industry town of cars, are we starting to rely too much on billboards in this city? And what happens if something happens to advertisers and others? I'm very concerned that maybe we need to expand our horizons beyond hotels and billboards. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? I see we have a motion and a second on the table. Okay. Move to a vote. And the motion was adopted five to zero. Thank you very much to our staff representatives. We'll move to Item F, New Business, F1. We've merged with Item F5. It's our request for proposals for the 2025 to 2028 Social Service Contract Cycle. And as a reminder, Item F5 was the exploration of additional harm reduction tools. Yeah, I think an abbreviated staff report, okay, on the side of the table. Just an abbreviated staff report from our lovely representative of staff. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Thank you very much for having us. My name is Christine Savred. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager and the Acting Human Services Manager. With me tonight are Kristoff Schroder, our Department Director, and Derek Murray, our Social Services Supervisor. Derek's going to provide you with a very brief staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So for the past four decades, West Hollywood has been a steadfast supporter of care, equity and community well-being. With this current contract year, we have allocated nearly $7 million to 29 programs that address health care, mental health, food services and much more. We're now launching the RFP process for the 25-28 contract cycle. And this process is designed to be transparent and inclusive, ensuring that all qualified providers have an opportunity to apply. This cycle, we are opening it up to a broader pool of applicants. We're encouraging innovation and expanding our scope of services and available services available to the community. The priorities in this RFP come directly from this community. Through extensive outreach, public hearings and input from our advisory boards and commissions, we've identified key areas where our funding will have the greatest impact. These include programs to support health and wellness, homeless services, legal and advocacy programs, economic empowerment, among others. And to ensure accountability and transparency, we've established a clear and fair process for evaluating proposals. The Human Services Commission, in collaboration with city staff, will carefully review each proposal, and there will be multiple opportunities for the public to give input before final recommendations are given to council. And to keep everybody informed of the key dates, the RFP is scheduled to be released on April 25. Proposals are due June 5, and we will review the submissions and present funding recommendations to city council on August 18. And the new contract cycle will begin October 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Do my, oh, we'll take public comment first. I see, we'll give Victor a break for a second. Joe Green signed up first, and then Victor Olmachenko after that.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Green, co-chair of the LA County Commission on HIV and also a member of the Disabilities Advisory Board. Thank you, Mayor Byers, and I'm grateful to be here tonight. We know that harm reduction works. We know that the Harm Reduction Center that Being Alive Opens works. The creative thinking of a harm reduction vending machine is really forward-thinking. And with the Olympics coming here in a few years, and this being a pride city, that vending machine can make a difference for those athletes that are coming into town. So I really support that, and I hope you will as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Victor Olmachenko. Oh, he didn't. I'm sorry. You didn't sign up for this. You don't have to speak.
I'd love to talk. Well, is it, I combined, I'm sorry, start the timer. F, I believe this is F1. Of course, we have a strong Human Services Commission that does valuable work. I've always wondered whether maybe we shouldn't have a little bit more resources put towards these various human services and organizations that provide such valuable, valuable help to our community. But in combining F1, I guess, and F5, I did submit a statement. I just wanted to say that the proposal about harm reduction, F5, that this proposal does address a proactive approach to ensuring public health. And the city indeed should explore implementing the use of the Defend One Portable All-in-One Fentanyl Detection Device, as well as harm reduction vending machines. Lives will be saved. Thank you.
Thank you. Do, which of my colleagues would like to begin? Comments or deliberation?
I have a question. Actually, I have two questions, maybe three. All right. So I really appreciate the work you did with commissions and advisory boards and soliciting input. Why didn't we do a needs assessment? Because my concern is, and not to fault the commissions and boards, but they have a lot of valuable input, but sometimes they're speaking based on their own priorities. And the needs assessment, when we've done them in the past, usually the priority is housing. And, you know, that gives us a better sense of the public generally and what their needs are.
Thank you, council member. I'm Kristoff Schroder. I'm the Director of Human Services and Rent Stabilization for this city. We had a number of items that came before the council that solicited that type of information, the WHO 40, the Community Safety and Wellbeing Study. We took from that data and extrapolated where the service provision needs are in the community, and we decided it would be even more efficient to do targeted focus groups and outreach, which we're doing through our contractor. So we thought it would be, it was my decision that rather than providing some sort of redundancy, if we had the information already available from our other sources, then we could utilize that.
I guess that concerns me a little bit because, you know, those, that outreach wasn't necessarily asking people, what social services do you need? What services do people in your household need? Which is what we've usually done when we've done needs assessments in the past. One other, not really a question, maybe a concern. I appreciate why you're expanding this to for-profit businesses that might want to submit. But I think our priority should still be for our nonprofit partners who have worked with us for many years. So I don't know if there's something that we can put in here that indicates that, that's at least my sense. I don't know if my colleagues feel the same way. And then I know that there was direction previously about grants in schools, and really, I don't think of that as so much of a social service program, but more as educational programming. And I guess a little bit concerned that kind of dumping it in here, it's a completely different type of programming. So I'm not sure that it makes sense to include that kind of programming in this RFP. So those were my reactions. I still have some concern that the needs that we're identifying are all, I think they're all important needs, but I would really like to have a better sense of the community's views from some kind of survey. Thank you.
Councilmember Meister, did you want to?
Yeah. Yeah, and I understand where Vice Mayor is coming from, because it is always good to go really to the source. But when was the last time we did a community need study? Because I know we do one every couple of years.
So 2019, we did the Community Needs Assessment, and in 2022, we did the Needs Assessment for community members of color.
Okay. So the concern about including for-profits, I would say that if they're offering something that the nonprofits aren't offering, then that's, you know, obviously, we want to be able to provide services, you know, from, and if the nonprofits aren't providing it, then why not? But I understand the concern about prioritizing the nonprofits. And if the nonprofits do provide that service, then that would be a priority. I do have a concern on the harm reduction item about the, about, not about the vending machines in general, but about the syringes. Only because if these vending machines are in places where they're not, where there's no supervision, and it's over by the park, because it happens to be that the park is over by the clubs, then I would have a problem with syringes. I know that, you know, the city of Santa Monica had issues about this with their parks finding syringes in the park where the kids are playing. And so I would say that that would be problematic for me. So I think we really have to think carefully about where, if we did move forward with something like that, where they would be located and what kind of monitoring or supervision would be there. Because again, I don't think, you know, we have our clubs, and they're right next to the parks. And so I think we have to be really careful about that.
Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Oh, sorry. Oh, and following up on, I believe, Councilmember Meister's questions, when was the last time we did a status on women report? And I'm asking this because I just sent an email asking us to do another. And I'm asking this because I just sent an email asking us to do another one. So -- because I know, I think I know the answer, but it's like 2015?
Before that.
2014, I think. I was still at the city when they still did it.
That's something we'll have to check and get back to you on.
And that, you, there's no reason you shouldn't know that now, because I didn't ask you ahead of time. So it's not, it wasn't a gotcha. It was just one of those, like, I'm pretty sure, you know, when it was. And have we ever done any type of study on families and parents in this city?
Yes.
Yeah, but I couldn't remember the, like, the last time. Is it 2022? No, sorry, 2019?
We would also have to look specifically at that. You know, we do include in most of our outreach efforts to reach all of the different priority populations that we have, and families with children are one of those. But specifically, study or investigation of specific needs, we haven't done. We do have prior direction from Mayor Byers, looking into the needs of families, and particularly focused on childcare, that came out earlier in this fiscal year. And so that is on the Division's work plan.
Great. Thank you. And I forgot that our wonderful mayor did that item a while ago, so I apologize.
Councilmember, it's 2014, the status, the report on the status of women in West Hollywood.
Okay. So things have changed since 2014. So I understand our different needs assessment tools probably can capture stuff in that way, but there was a robust effort to, I think, study that. So maybe that needs to be revisited. I am in agreement with, I think, what some of my colleagues are saying. I want us to serve a specific purpose with our RFP for our social services. So I think what you've laid out here is good, but also, we have to be within our own bounds, but also meet this moment, right? So does that mean we shouldn't do more? No. Does that mean we will do more? Probably. But like, how does that look like? I'm curious to see where you're at. I did watch the Human Services Commission meeting, and I thought it was well done. I was kind of a little bit confused, because it just seemed to me and how I saw members of the public talking about, is this group's coming and asking for more money. And I don't know if that was directly -- I don't know if we articulated kind of the process in a different way to help explain it, but everyone's really scared right now, so I understand. And that's why I co-sponsored this item with Councilmember Hang on harm reduction tools, HIV/AIDS testing. I believe one member of the public said about the closure of the LGBT Center. All of these things are at risk. And so what's that priority level in some way, shape, and form? If you can come back to us and kind of tell us where our community's going to be dictating kind of those needs. For example, we've talked about nurses at the L.A. LGBT Center that specifically serve the city of West Hollywood's population. We already contract for certain providers, but how could we do more as testing centers close, unfortunately? And then the range of appointments only gets more scarce. I do believe the vending -- it sounds like you want to say something. No, okay, sorry. I do believe the vending machines and the types of different technologies to do harm reduction tools do work. I've done a lot of and read a lot of studies on it. Being Alive is a perfect case partner for that work, that how it happens. The more that we can do, and invisible spots, although it might be uncomfortable, that's where people go. We've always heard that people aren't going to go to the sheriff's station, because they're going to feel like they're going to get arrested. So how do we have it in a park or anything like that, where we can make it? And, you know, wherever it happens, I think we need to just have it there. So I know this is a very general item, saying, "Signs, seal, deliver, move forward. You'll see us in a few months." But, so I just want to thank you for the hard work that you've also put into it, because it really does show.
Thank you, Councilmember Hang.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff for the amount of work that's put into generating this report, talking to endless organizations, dealing with internal staff and council members, but also members of the community and members of the commission, which can sometimes be very colorful in that process. So thank you for all the work that you've put into this. And I hope that my colleagues will support the harm reduction item. And I am in agreement with my colleagues that perhaps a needs assessment could have been done, but thank you.
Did you want to? Okay, good. I mean, this is great. I am really glad to see this and excited to see it from this point of view, having been on the Human Services Commission for the last cycle of this. I want to especially lift up, because it's the thing that's reverberated back to me in the biggest way in community, which is the addition of the childcare services. And I know that during the hearing, there were a number of people speaking in support of those as well, so I really appreciate that inclusion. I'm thrilled to see the exploration of additional harm reduction tools brought here, and grateful for the timing that we were able to combine it into this RFP, so that work can move forward together. And just in general, think that you've all done a really incredible amount of work to balance the many competing, although they're not competing, they're sort of overlapping and intertwined priorities, and find the path forward for us in this RFP. And just thankful for how robust and moving that public hearing was, all the testimony, I think, over 35 speakers. It was a lot of folks that came out that night to make sure that we were aware of what work they were doing, and how we can be involved in supporting that, especially in this time. So thank you all for your very hard work, and that thanks extends to the commission itself, too. I know who has hard work still ahead of them. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, and I want to echo that. I know this is a very difficult process to manage, and I think the commission and the staff appreciate all the work. I support Councilmember Hang's harm reduction item. We're not adopting any particular policies tonight. This is just giving you direction to explore and identify additional resources that may be available. Where they're located, that's yet to be determined, so I completely support that. I at least heard one of my colleagues say that maybe we need to have something in this process when it comes to making decision-making, decisions about who's going to get the grants, that we prioritize nonprofits over profit, for-profit entities, when the nonprofit provides the service. I would like us to look at the grants in schools, maybe separating out those that are educational for a separate process. And there may be some proposals from schools that are social services, but a trip to the museum really shouldn't be part of our social services funding. That's a separate type of educational program. And then I know we didn't do a complete needs assessment. You did sort of an amalgamation of existing, but I think there's still time for us to do some kind of survey. And I heard Councilmember Erickson talk about the needs of women in the community, and the needs of families with children as targets. But I'd like to see some kind of survey conducted before decisions are made in terms of who is getting the grants. And I think there still is time to do, you know, we have FM3, and they can turn things around pretty quickly. And I don't know what the cost is of that, but I think it would give us all very valuable information.
Thank you. We have, we do have FM3 on contract, and can explore with them a proposal. If we were to do kind of a straightforward kind of survey with question and answer, rather than kind of extensive community outreach, would that be something that the council would be open to? Kind of a validation and kind of some open questions?
Yeah. And I will say that in the past, oftentimes, they've asked, "What kind of services do you think are important for the city?" Well, that gives us their opinion about what they think is. I really want to know, "What services does your household need? Or do you anticipate your household needing?" Or, because, you know, I think we're all in support of various services that none of us actually utilize, but we think they're important. But I think getting down to what do individual households need is very important.
Yeah. And if I could just add on that, if the survey is short and direct, I think a bigger sample would be worthwhile, because if I remember correctly, of the survey that was done with women, we had one woman who was 25 to 34, and they weighted the data, and it ended up that woman represented 50 people, which in market research is not, you don't do that. So I would rather you, you know, keep the survey short and direct. As Vice Mayor said, you know, "What services are you using? What services do you need?", right? And then try to get, you know, at least 500 people to answer, whether it's by phone or probably phone is.
Yeah, we'll reach, we can reach out, absolutely. You know, that's pending their availability to take on the additional work. We have a great relationship to date with them. And we've done a number of surveys, which usually, you know, we can expedite within six to eight weeks, kind of in the past. So there is time, I believe, given our, kind of where we are in the, in the program, without making promises for a vendor that we haven't talked to about the work yet.
Councilmember Erickson?
And I think to piggyback off of what Councilmember Meister was saying, we all kind of, I think, a few meetings ago, and we've talked about this, what do our older adults and our disabilities community need? And how does that one-on-one attention to them really address? I think we talked about, in some grand way, an ambassador program. SNAP is being cut, and most likely will be cut, out of the federal budget, which is horrible, but that's going to have horrible impacts to our seniors. And are they aware of it? What type of food assistance programs do we have? The mayor and I had an amazing briefing with Maison a couple of weeks ago, where we learned a lot about the different policies that we kind of already were up to, understanding, but the full scope is, I think, not before us. And so how can we do individualized research outside of our normal groups to targeted seniors? I will just never forget when I was going door-to-door last year, I mean, talking with people for 30 to 40 minutes each, and finding out what they need, and them not knowing really what the city offers. They own homes, and they have, that's their retirement, but they might not have enough food and other aspects. So what can we do to help make sure that they're aware of all that we're doing? So that type of targeted approach would be helpful for our most vulnerable in our community.
Are there any other comments or questions? I think we have a motion. I'm going to second it.
Okay. It's a motion to approve the RFP with the direction that's been given.
Okay.
And including, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, with all the direction that was given for the needs assessment, and, okay.
And this includes item F5.
Oh, yes. It includes directing staff to research and evaluate the expansion of harm reduction.
Thank you. And included as part of this RFP funding cycle.
Yeah.
Councilmember Meister. It's okay.
And thank you to our.
The motion passes 5-0 for both items.
Thank you. The hour is getting late, it is okay. We are on item F2, Request for Financing Commitment Letter and Authorization to Issue a Loan from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, in the amount of $5,500,000 for a development of an affordable housing project at 1215, 1217 North Larrabee. There's some other stuff there, too. Hi.
Good evening. I'm Allison Bartle, I'm the Project Development Administrator. I'm joined by Brian Leeg, our manager for property development, and Steve Campbell, our current deputy city manager. And I have a brief presentation if you wanted, or we can do questions. I'm open, I'm.
Great to questions, I think.
Great to questions. Lovely.
Okay. And then we do have two public commenters before we can deliberate.
Yep. So I just wanted to clarify, on page three of seven, on the staff report, it says, "Existing residents at the properties will receive advance notice of," is it Decro, Decro?
Decro, yep.
"Decro and Maison Angelino's development plans and opportunities to participate in the design of the future building." And then it says, "Currently, one unit of the property is vacant, and the other three units are owner-occupied." Now, which existing residence are we talking about? Are we talking about the neighborhood? Because that's different than the existing residents at the properties.
I just meant the existing residents in the surrounding area. So, you know, forgive that. The current property is owner-occupied, and the other unit is vacant. You know, it's likely to remain that way throughout until it's demolished and they move forward the project. So there will be ample opportunity for community feedback, but we don't anticipate that the ownership group is going to have significant feedback on the design, since they are the ownership group.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure it was clear that we're talking about the resident, the neighborhood?
Yep.
Basically, that there will be community outreach by this, by this team.
Yep. And that's further outlined later in the staff report.
Okay. And not, and not just to the owner-occupied units.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you have a question, Vice Mayor?
Just a clarification. The, the property is currently owned by the.
Maison Angelino, yeah.
Yes, okay. I wanted to make sure that was clear, that they have site control. And then this financing commitment has nothing to do with the normal process that any development is going to have to go through. They're going to have to go through the same process, community meetings, planning commission, et cetera, correct?
Yep. This is just a financing commitment. It's not impacting anything to do with CECL or their planning entitlements.
Great. Thank you.
We have two public commenters signed up to speak. Oh, Councilmember Hang, did you have a question? Okay. We'll go to the public then. Armin Nishat, followed by Victor Olmachenko.
Good evening. My name is Armin Nishat. I'm the Real Estate Development Director for Decro Corporation, and I'm here to speak in favor of this item. Decro is a nonprofit organization with over 35 years of experience in Southern California, developing permanent supportive housing, affordable housing, and mixed-use developments. At our core, we are a nonprofit developer with a balanced approach to the development of affordable and supportive housing. We have developed over 1,300 affordable and workforce housing units across 13 properties, and we employ creative, innovative approaches to design, financing, and construction. We've recently completed 300 units of permanent supportive and affordable housing in L.A. County in just the last two years, and we have two more permanent supportive housing projects that are currently under construction. Our business model has been to work with development partners, and we are excited to come to the city of West Hollywood for our Larrabee Gardens project. Larrabee Gardens will be homed up to 40 units, and will result in both permanent supportive housing for transition-aged youth, as well as low-income housing for individuals living with HIV. This project will include case management and other services to help all residents achieve stability and opportunities to prosper and thrive. We strongly urge you to vote for this item. We thank the city of West Hollywood for both their financial and ongoing support, as well as for staff's efforts, and we look forward to working together to deliver much-needed affordable housing to the city of West Hollywood. Thank you.
Would you consider including work, some portion of workforce housing in that project?
In this project, I think we might have to kind of revisit that. That might take a much deeper dive. We've been working with our, through our pro forma and with our financial consultants, that might take a little bit more of a deeper dive, but we're always open to looking at it, but it would just take a lot more research.
Okay. Maybe take a look.
Thanks.
Victor Olmachenko is our next speaker. You're signed up for this one. Okay. Great. You can never be sure.
Well, Victor Olmachenko. While we just heard from Mr. Nishat, and while Delcro Corporation has a track record of building affordable housing since 1989, what does Delcro's new, Decro's new co-partner, Maison Angelino, bring to the table exactly? Per the staff report, quote, "Founded in 2024, Maison Angelino is leading the way in sustainable development focused on creating affordable housing for the future, and they combine eco-friendly design, energy efficiency, and social responsibility to provide innovative housing solutions," end of quote. All the right words. They sound good. I'm all for the affordable housing, and I know that this is 100% affordable housing project. But who are the principals? What are their accomplishments of this group, Maison, formed in 2024, Angelino? I would be curious in finding that out. And it was good to hear that 300 units have been developed by the company in L.A. County alone. It's nice to know the name will be called Larrabee Gardens, I guess, at this point, and that it's targeting transitional youth and those with HIV. But as Councilmember Meister mentioned, it would be good, I think, we've, we're always talking about workforce housing, and we've often heard folks who work in the hotels, you know, they come to the city, they talk in front of you, they say, "Oh, my goodness, I have to travel from Victorville to clean the hotel rooms and the, you know, and be the janitors and the people that clean up the stuff in the hotels." So I'm just curious about how those kinds of folks that we so often hear from, how could they be maybe accommodated in this planned new affordable housing project? So yes, transitional youth, HIV, and let's help these hotel-type people with the red shirts and everything that come in and say. with the red shirts and everything that come in and say they have to travel so far, and maybe they could live close to where they work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hing?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to express that I'm in full support of this item and I'm ready to move it when my colleagues have the appetite for it. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just hoping that Allison might respond to the question of who Maison is. I believe they're the ones who own the land.
Yeah, they own the land. David and Sean Hakakian are, are brothers, and they live and own property in West Hollywood. They're developers on the market rate side. This is their first venture into nonprofit world, in the nonprofit affordable world, and so because of that, they brought on Decro, who has experience. And so, it's a partnership that we're seeing more of as more market rate get into affordable and likely to continue, especially if we descend into a recession. We often see a lot more market rate developers shifting into the affordable space. If they have capacity.
Well, thank you very much. I don't see any other questions or comments from my colleagues. And we have a motion and a second on the table to move this item. Now we have five votes in. The motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you all very much. We're moving on to item F3, City Positions on SB 79, Local Government Land, Public Transit Use, Housing Development, Transit-Oriented Development, and item SB 677, Housing Development Streamline Approval. Oh, that's great.
Hello.
I'll turn it over to our staff representative. Hello.
Good evening. My name is Hernán Molina, Governmental Affairs liaison for the city of West Hollywood. I'm here with my manager, Andy Lobano, Community and Legislative Affairs Manager. This is an ungapped hour, I cannot speak. One of the reasons we came to the council to present this item is because the legislative priorities do not include this kind of legislative initiatives. And as a matter of fact, our legislative priorities, while are very supportive of council because of affordable housing and housing in general, as your council and previous councils have directed us to support, this is somewhat of a radical change. But also, a previous council has opposed SB 50, which this one, particularly SB 79, has a flavor of it. This is a much more nuanced bill, it's a limited bill, that today, in today's version of the bill, and just so the council know, the bill is in a very early stage. Tomorrow will be heard in the Senate Housing Committee, and it still has to go, if it gets approved, as written, or maybe it's amended, it will, still has to go to Senate Local Government. And if it gets approved, then it has to go to appropriations, and then to the Senate floor, and then to the Assembly. So we are, we still are in a very early process of it. That's in regards to SB 79. The other thing that is noted on the staff report on this bill is that while it does not apply as written today for West Hollywood, we have had a conversation with the city attorney and community partners. The bill will eventually apply once Metro is built. But the, the question today that we have is where it will apply? Because Metro has not made a decision as to where the alignment will run. Will it run through San Vicente? Will it come up north through Fairfax? Will it go to La Brea? And if it goes to La Brea, then the impact will be, will be felt on, within a quarter or a half-mile radius at the intersection of La Brea and Santa Monica. So those are things to consider. The other thing with SB 677, it's a streamlining bill. Senator Winner has a history with this kind of legislation, particularly as he introduced SB 35, which basically removed the discretionary abilities of cities to approve housing projects if those cities had not met the RENA numbers. Because we did in the past, we made a decision at that, at that, at that time, and I was already doing this kind of work, of not taking a position. SB 423 removed the, expanded the, the time length of the bill. And then, this bill proposes not only to continue to expand the horizon, but also do some technical cleanups to SB 9, which, as you may or may not recall, was a bill authored by Senator Atkins. At the time, she was the pro temp of the Senate, which allowed for the split of urban lots, family, single-family homes, and then those lots could also have duplexes. So this council has supported housing, previous councils have supported housing. Perhaps the thing that is a little more concerning is the limitation, or, yeah, the limitation of a local discretion. However, that's something that the council needs to let us know how, how you feel today, so that we can then either support this bill, remain neutral, or oppose it, which I, I don't know if that's the case. But if we, if, if we hear from the council that we are supportive of these bills, then we are also going to amend the legislative priorities. So the priorities reflect your policy actions. And with that, we are open to questions.
Thank you. I see that we have a public commenter, so maybe we take a public comment and then we come back for a conversation and discussion.
Victor Omolchenko?
That's right. Did you sign up to speak on this item, Victor?
Yes.
Well, then you're up.
I remember those SB 50 days. Hello, Victor Omolchenko, longtime West Hollywood resident. Well, I had a chance to review some of the documentation on this bill. And while supportive of increased housing and height along major thoroughfares, like, we're looking forward to a 34-story building along, you know, on La Brea at Romaine with quite a few affordable housing units put in. I'm kind of wary that we may be streamlining our residential neighborhoods into an unsustainable existence with seven-story buildings plopped onto streets with aging infrastructure that's rarely getting needed attention. And to truly reduce carbon emissions, I'd expect no or extremely limited car parking to be allowed in these new projects along the major transit lines, such as what, as Mr. Molina mentioned, could evolve as a project at Metro's SMB nearby us yard right now. Because this law will enable local jurisdictions like Metro to, at their discretion, redevelop their properties. And since, hopefully, we'll have the subway line coming along San Vicente, the northern extension, I'm just curious whether these proposed bills don't need some reworking, especially looking at how much parking are they going to be allowing? How much parking will be needed? And boy, when I saw that, like, if a project is developed along a major transit line and it's only a quart, it can be a quarter of a mile one way or a half a mile that way, expect to hear a lot from West Hollywood West Neighborhood, Norma Triangle Neighborhood, because of concern of increasing densification and height. Thank you.
Thank you. No other public commenters? Who would like to begin our deliberation?
Thank you so much. I support these two bills. I hear the comments from the public. A lot of these bills along transit-rich corridors with parking requirements have already been kind of taken care of as a result of already-passed state legislation. The city of West Hollywood, correct me if I'm wrong, Hernán, all exist within a rapid transit area for a lot of the parking reform bills that have passed over the past several years.
Laura Friedman had one of those bills, Bobby Wicks had one of those bills. We did not support those bills, we remain neutral.
Wonderful, thank you. So I think we need to get in the process of streamlining and being a part of the solution, and I think this puts us back at the table than in opposition. And I think that these bills will be amended to a different type of, I, I think they will come down in a way, but I think that supporting them and their goals is something that we need to look to. I don't think we're anywhere near our RENA numbers. I don't think we're anywhere near meeting the housing goals and needs of the region overall. We are going to have to get denser. We are going to have to build higher in some ways. We live along major transit corridors and in our neighborhoods that have large swaths of land for developers and individuals who own their homes to buy right, build, or sell if they want. And I think the more that we can do to build housing at all levels, including affordable, we already have our affordable housing here, our requirements is, is needed. And so I'm supportive of these items and switching to supportive, and I think this is a good step forward for the city, which promotes housing in every way.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson, would you like to go next? Councilmember Hing, can I pass it over to you?
Thank you, Mayor. I am in support of these two items. We have a housing shortage. I think our RENA numbers are 3,933 units, and we're nowhere near that. And these two bills is going to get us, move us in the right direction in terms of building more units near transit-rich corridors. And we have a housing shortage. We need to do what we can to create more housing, to give other people the opportunity to live here in West Hollywood. And I think these two bills are the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister?
Yeah, I would say that we either remain neutral until we see where these bills are, are headed, or, or no. Because we're just giving away control to the state. We could do what, what my colleagues are, are saying we need to do. We could do that as a council. We have that, we have that ability to do that. So to, again, to support bills that are one-size-fits-all bills for a number of cities and counties in this state that are vastly different is just, it's not thinking about your city. It's, it's, it's just not. So I'm, I'm opposed to this, although I would be willing to remain neutral until we see where, where this lands.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I, I agree with Councilmember Meister. I think we should le, remain neutral on this, on these proposals until we see how they're amended. I, I don't think these really help us solve our housing problem. And what they would actually result in, if I'm reading them correctly, is a lot of displacement of people because it would incentivize developers to build seven-story, eight-story buildings within a short distance from our major boulevards. And the incentive would be to replace existing apartment buildings with much taller buildings with almost no parking. And I don't think that, that we, as one of the densest cities in the country, need to absorb all of that density. I don't think it's sustainable, nor do I think our residents, who would be displaced, will be happy about it.
Please, go ahead.
If I may, Senator Winner, including this villain in, in previous iterations, strong anti-displacement language. So one of the issues that this bill also includes is taking care of people who are rent-stabilized, for instance, so they are not displaced. The challenge, as, and as I see your eyes, is how would these projects come to fruition when? I hear you. But it's, it's written into the law. And as I said, tomorrow is the first hearing of at least three in the Assembly, in the Senate, and then the Senate floor. Plus, then if it gets out of the House of Origin, which has to be by, I believe, June 8th, it will go to the Assembly. Will it, will go most likely through the same three policy committees? So the council, can, can pause or just give us direction tonight?
Thank you.
I, just a couple of things. I didn't understand this as a one-size-fits-all, although I know most state legislation typically acts like this. I saw in SB 79, a tiered approach to different transit stops and what different solutions would look like. And I, but the question, I think, still remains, why would we bother doing something like this when we have the tools within our midst to make these decisions ourselves? And I think it's, it's a question that Hernán answered when you were doing this presentation, that there was a time that this council made active decisions to oppose legislation that was happening at the state level that would create more capacity for housing. And it's not just capacity for housing at the local level, but also more support for the transit systems that are losing support. LA County Metro is doing very well, but up and down the state, financing models for transportation are depleting themselves. And a major source or reason that we need to build more housing around transit stops is to fuel the support for the transit systems that's needed. So I saw this coming onto our agenda as a moment to turn the corner for our city and for the conversation around transit-oriented development and housing. And I think it's actually a unique and awesome moment that we have to issue support as a city for something that would be so future-looking. It's not within our, our midst now, but it is a future-looking conversation that we get to be a part of at this time. And I think as the state is entertaining what something like this could look like for cities up and down the state, to have a city like West Hollywood on the record as support is, is meaningful, and meaningful in a way that this sort of policy hasn't been able to have support for in the past. And in fact, our city has been a deterrent to that support in the past. So I think that's, for me, why I wrapped my head around the necessity of seeing something like this on the agenda at this moment in time. My understanding is also that we can issue support, and that support can change should the bill itself change over time. So knowing that things can change if, if our support should need to change, I trust our legislative eyes and ears on the ground to help us see what those changes are and reconsider them, should they be truly detrimental. But I don't see anything in SB 67, or SB 79, that are outside of the scope of what we're looking to for the future of our city. We know we need more capacity in, in housing. We know that capacity should be oriented closest to transit. And while it's an unknown of what that'll look like in our city, I think both of those values stand, and issuing support for this is, is truly just a value statement. And I think a value statement that helps the entire state have a conversation differently, bless you, has, helps the entire state have a different conversation than it has had in the past. So in that way, I'm very supportive of us issuing our support for both SB 76, or SB 79 and SB 677 tonight. And I am grateful to you, Hernán, for the idea that you said, if that should happen tonight, then our priorities also update. And I think that's sort of the moment we're at, is doing things differently, trying to be good collaborators with the state. And I think having an opportunity to collaborate from the outset of legislation and not wait until late in the game allows us to have those conversations in more meaningful ways, too. So thank you for the opportunity to have this discussion tonight. And if my colleagues have anything else to add, I see there's a, a motion on the table. Is there, okay, and there's a second, great. Councilmember, Vice Mayor, did you not want to say anything else?
Well, I just wanted to clarify, the motion is to endorse both of these.
Yes.
To submit letters of support for both and update our council, our legislative priorities.
And provide updates as need be to us.
I'm sorry?
And if things change, let us know.
Yes, absolutely. And if I may add one thing, the, the council has obviously been very supportive of housing. This bill is not targeting West Hollywood, which has been a good player. It's been targeting counties, like Marin County, for instance, or, or other cities that have not been good players when it comes to housing production. It's late and we are done. Thank you very much for your guidance.
Thank you so much. And I do believe that took us to the end of our agenda, to move fast.
Uh, F6, I think.
Oh, wait, really? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, that was my fault, too. Okay, sorry, F6, requests to the, oh, requests to the county of Los Angeles related to vacancies within the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, and this was my item, and given the lateness of the hour, I'll keep it brief. As we all know, the Sheriff's Department has a number of vacancies. Part of this is the former sheriff had a very bad relationship with the county supervisors, and because of that, the county supervisors did not authorize several classes of, for recruits. And we're kind of behind on that. And that means that a lot of our deputies are ending up working overtime. A lot of positions throughout the county are not filled. So this is giving authorization to send a letter from the city council encouraging the county board of supervisors to take action to reduce the number of vacancies and to support retaining the, the deputies that we. support retaining the, the deputies that we currently have. So that's the essence of this item. And I'm glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. I, I held it back from the consent calendar, and that was on two items. One, my understanding is that there are vacancies within the Sheriff's Department and that, at the same time, the Board of Supervisors more recently has increased the amount of events they are doing to bring more recruits. One of the big problems is that there is a dwindled interest in taking up those jobs. And so to me, the task isn't in the hands of the Board of Supervisors, but something else. And I think it is a shared responsibility of us as 88 cities across this county to raise the profile. I think the things that we do around our, you know, public safety luncheon and awards recognition, those sort of things help boost morale and spirit. But I think, thinking, and then I think the item that you brought around, the healthcare center in, in the sheriff station itself, is another great thing that we do to change the way that people understand this job and this role. But I don't know that sending a letter to the board, who has increased efforts to recruit and to bring on support, is exactly the way to go. The other aspect of this to me was, we're looking at this conversation in the context of their budget discussions. And this, to me, would say that our city is advocating for one specific role in the county landscape to be filled. And it doesn't suggest that there's any other roles that need that filling or that attention, just that this is the one and sole one that we're focused on. And I, I know, based on our RFP conversation for Social Services, that that's not exactly what we're thinking. And I know that this is a specific need at this time. But I, I couldn't, in good faith, sign a letter that I think would then indicate to the public that this is where we're putting our energy in terms of the public safety issue. I, I very much agree that it is one way that we can go about raising attention to an issue. So if my colleagues are interested in sending this letter forward, we absolutely can. I just couldn't have the conversation and just support it as a casual consent item.
Well, I certainly am opening, open to amending the letter to indicate that we recognize that there are a whole host of priorities that the county has. And also sending the letter to Sheriff Luna, recognizing that this is a shared responsibility between the Board of Supervisors and the sheriff to work together to fill these vacancies. So if, if that addresses your concern, I would move the item with that direction.
Councilmember Erickson, and then?
Actually, I believe the city's already been signing on to several letters through California Contract Cities. We're directly talking with Sheriff Luna and ALADS, as well as the Department, the Board of Supervisors. We've been in several lobbying meetings with them. I'm on the executive board, where we've pressed these priorities with them directly. And we've, as an association, have made it known that we want to do exactly what your, your intent for your letter has, is in the plan to do. Sorry, that didn't make any sense. What, what you would like to do, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Councilmember Heng?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to express that I understand the spirit of the item. In my day job, I work on a daily basis with our deputy sheriffs from our Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. I do, I am aware on a daily basis that they are very short-staffed, they work very long hours, a lot of them do carping. For those of the members of the public who don't know what that means, that's cadre of administrative reserve personnel. That means a deputy can be moved anywhere, anytime, to do another type of job that they're not usually doing their usual customary duties for. So I understand the spirit of this letter, where if we want to send a letter to the Board of Supervisors and to the sheriff, I think it, it wouldn't hurt. But I do also appreciate Councilmember Erickson explaining to the public that we're already doing that through contract cities. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see that there's a citizen position slip we should read into the record?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have one citizen position slip from Victor Olmachenko in support of the item.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the table, unless there's any other comments?
And the motion is to go ahead and send a letter with the modifications that I, I indicated earlier, and also send a similar letter to the sheriff indicating that this is a shared responsibility.
Those five zero.
Okay. So now we're at the end of the agenda. Or are we? Just kidding. We'll move to excluded consent, which there is none, and our final public comment period, which we have three people, I see, signed up to speak. So we'll take Joe Green first, followed by Nicholas Renteria and Victor Olmachenko will close us out. I don't know.
Good evening once again, council. On April 10th, the HIV Commission had a contingency planning meeting for budgetary planning. And we basically, at the request of the county, took our budget and eliminated all but four service categories, the basic core medical services for Ryan White, which is about $50 million that comes in from the county. I think that most of you are aware that the CDC has eliminated all prevention funding. We've also been noticed that we would not, we will not be receiving any ending the HIV epidemic money, that's additional millions of dollars. Again, on April 10th, we had our commission meeting, we had 60 people online, we had 60 people in the room, and we had 40 commissioners present. So it is a dire situation, it's not going to be getting any better. And at the same time, on April 10th, the Transgender Caucus submitted to the full commission a solidarity statement in support of transgender, gender expansive, intersex, and two-spirit communities. And I didn't have the opportunity to speak to the Transgender Caucus, or Transgender Advisory Board here, because they didn't have quorum this month, nor did the LGBTQ+ Commission meet this month. But I did want to bring the solidarity statement to your attention, because I believe it's important, and let you know that as, as what was said at the Human Services Commission meeting, there are funding cuts happening everywhere. We see it happening already. And luckily, when you do your final RFP process contracting, we should have better insight as to how bad it will be come, come August, when you're doing that. So thank you for your time, and happy Monday night.
Happy Monday night. Thank you. I don't believe we see Nicholas Renteria here anymore, so Victor Olmachenko, you're up.
Victor Olmachenko, longtime West Hollywood resident. Well, this is about Route 66. Having traveled the length of the Mother Road from Chicago to Santa Monica back in 1971 with my college buddy Gary Janis, who left us way too early because of the plague, I want to fully support the Route 66 Centennial being added to WEHO's proposed list. This decision honors our rich legacy and emphasizes community pride. And I look forward to learning more about what transpires at the forthcoming meeting that the mayor will be attending in Albuquerque. And then, from 1971, 45 years later, what am I doing? I'm standing with Councilmember Lauren Meister in the Veterans Memorial Square, celebrating the 90th anniversary of Route 66. So we started celebrating that early, close by, where we're going to have the Holloway Transitional Housing. So now I'm going to go back in time to 1971, my first time to California. And when Gary and I got here, we went to Hollywood and Vine. And who did we see but Uncle Milty, Milton Berle, the famous NBC comedy star who also was like a drag queen and would sing a song, "Let Me Do One." Let's have another cup of coffee, let's have another piece of pie. And I still have my Route 66 cup that we got at the 90th anniversary celebration with Councilmember Meister. So I'm really looking forward to our city really doing something great. And I know that the West Hollywood Preservation Alliance will work with the city. We have so many historically preserved buildings, and we can do tours, we can do a lot of things to celebrate this section of Route 66, Santa Monica Boulevard Number Two, because people were close to the end, to the ocean, and this is worthy of celebration. And having a cup of coffee and a piece of pie. Thanks for listening to me so much.
Thanks, Victor. Thank you so much. All right, we are in our final stretch, folks. Councilmember comments and meeting attendance reports. Who would like to get started? Councilmember Heng?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as my meeting and attendance reports go, I swore in Commissioner Mark Edwards to the Historic Preservation Commission. I attended the WEHO Bingo Night at Hamburger Mary's, presented by the American Lung Association on behalf of our wonderful mayor. I attended the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce Leadership Luncheon. I attended the inaugural Laugh Out Loud Comedy Night at the Wild. And I attended the L.A. Blades Stonewall Democrats Roar Panel at the Abbey, where our wonderful mayor was on the panel, along with former mayor Abbey Land, and it was amazing. And I just have a short statement to read concerning Arts Month. April is celebrated as Arts Month, a time to honor the vital role of arts in building vibrant communities. From music and dance to visual arts, theater and film, the arts inspire creativity, foster dialogue, and reflect our diverse society. They connect people, build empathy, and strengthen our collective identity. In the city of West Hollywood, we are proud of our year-round arts programming, public arts installations, and cultural initiatives, supported by dedicated arts staff and the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission. As we celebrate this month, we acknowledge the importance of these efforts in fostering creativity, amplifying diverse voices, and strengthening the cultural fabric of our unity. We also extend our gratitude to those who bring arts to life in our arts community. Happy Arts Month, West Hollywood. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I hope everyone had a lovely Easter. I was able to spend it back home in Wisconsin with my family, where I surprised them, and none of them actually this time, well, they never do, had any idea I was coming home. So lots of fun, and I never want to eat ham again. So wishing everyone a happy Easter. Meetings and attendance, I forgot how much Wisconsinites loved, love ham. Meetings, Liability Trust Fund and Oversight Commission, I had my Saturdays in Plummer Park event. I attended and helped out minorly the Eastside Community Cleanup. Thank you, Mayor, for being a part of that event. I spoke at the USC Dorn's Life Politics Class. I attended the California Contract Cities Board Meeting. I attended the WEHO Reads Poetry Event. And then I, too, stopped by the Laugh Out Loud Night at the Wild. Congratulations to them. I also wanted to highlight something I believe a member of the public talked about, the seismic retrofitting program. It's nice to see our city continuing to make progress, but from what I understand, if the federal government wants to continue to cut programs to local cities, seismic retrofitting could be on the chopping block. So that is something that, when the federal government's taking away money, they're going to take away safety from our residents. So it's really unfortunate. But I want to thank city staff for providing that update in the report, something that we still have to do, and a lot of units still are out of compliance. If I could get an update off later via email about the left-hand turn signal at Crescent Heights, as well as the left-hand turn signal at La Brea and Fountain Avenue, about what's kind of happening on that one. I know that we are in process at La Brea and Fountain, but don't really know where that is at. Thank you, Mayor Byers, for doing your On the Move event item. I think it's so wonderful, as well as my colleagues, for doing the Art for Jewish American Heritage Month. I think it's going to be really beautiful, what comes about. Additionally, vacancies in the Sheriff's Department, as I talked about. Just wanted to also highlight that we, as a city, will not be getting deputies first, if not even in the top 10. Every contract city wants deputies, every city wants more, they have none. It will take roughly two-plus years at this point to finish classes because of the process they go through, but we continue to advocate for it, so I'm thankful for that item tonight. But it is going to be a while until we can kind of see that look, if that is the need of the council. And then additionally, next week, Tuesday, I just wanted to alert everyone, there is an event happening safeguarding our rights here in West, the auditorium. Council chamber is at 6:30 p.m., and I hope people can join.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister?
Thank you, Mayor. So I attended various community events, including our annual tree planting in Plummer Park. There are a number of neighborhood meetings happening this week. The WEHO Eastside Neighborhood Watch Group will hold their neighborhood meeting on Tuesday, April 22nd, in Plummer Park, open at 5:30, meeting starts at 6:00. There's also a neighborhood, an in-person neighborhood meeting for the proposed Mamonides Academy Campus Improvement Project, that's on Wednesday, April 23rd, at 6:00 p.m. at the Dohini Room at the West Hollywood Aquatic and Recreation Center. There's also two more community cleanup events coming. West Side Community Cleanup Saturday, April 26th, and Mid-City Community Cleanup Saturday, May 10th. And then there's a virtual neighborhood meeting for proposed nightclub use at 8948 Santa Monica Boulevard. That will be a virtual Zoom meeting Wednesday, April 30th, at 6:00 p.m. And then we also have Yama Shoah 2025, Remembering Victims of the Holocaust, and that will be on Wednesday, April 23rd, at 12:00 noon in Fiesta Hall in Plummer Park. Want to wish everyone a happy Passover and a happy Easter.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Heilman?
Thank you. I attended various community meetings, including the tree planting. And I wanted to announce some of the events, but my colleague beat me to it. So I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you all for a great evening. My attendance included the L.A. County City Selection Committee meeting, the National Governors Association and National League of Cities Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Workforce Collaborative in Motor City Detroit just last week, great time, the West Side Cities Council of Governments, the Metro Service Council meeting, and I was reappointed by the West Side Cog to continue serving on this body, so I'm really grateful and thrilled for that. I attended the Sanitation District Committee meeting and was also happy to attend the first cleanup. Thank you to everyone who attended, and please join us for the next two. Councilmember Meister shared both of those dates. I wanted to conclude with some comments. I've heard from a number of community members that the wrongful detainments and what's happening under the Trump administration truly warrant our concern and our attention. And I know this has been on the minds of so many, with Kilmar Abrego Garcia, who has been wrongfully detained in El Salvador, and all of the attention he's got, even with his state senator traveling to see him, or congressman traveling to see him in that detention center. And he is there, along with many other men who will never have, who have never had their day in court before they were illegally transported out of this country to that prison camp in El Salvador. And one of these individuals, who is on the hearts and minds of so many here in West Hollywood, is the gay makeup artist Andre Jose Hernandez Romero. So I wanted to just tonight lift up his name and remind us all that these actions must not be normalized. And whatever we can do to continue to advocate for their rights and freedom is something that we all must continue to do. Finally, I just wanted to say that I will be at the Route 66 Summit at the end of this week in Albuquerque, and I'm really looking forward to making sure that our city has a very prominent place on that map. The Mother Road travels through 11 states, and the majority of this are a great swath of the western part of our country. And it'll be really exciting to make sure that West Hollywood, including our Rainbow District, are firmly on that map. So I'm grateful to you all for supporting me in that opportunity, and look forward to seeing you all here on May 5th, 2025, our next council meeting. So this meeting is officially adjourned at 11:03, and thank you all again.
...with community, with our elected and appointed officials, and with city employees to help determine the city's vision and goals for the next 20 years.
It's an open house environment. This isn't a lecture, this isn't, you know, just a series of questions. It's an invitation for people to give us what their vision is for the city. And there's stations and different prompts and questions. You'll see Post-it notes all over the walls, a lot of different color, there's crayons, and to really get back to the sort of arts and crafts of how we're building a city together.
Putting dots on paper is, it's actually seeing what you're feeling. What it does, too, is it brings community, because other people will either agree with you or disagree with you, but their dot will also be up there. And that's what we want, to hear everybody's opinions. And we know that they're going to be different.
Some of the ways in which to engage with the project is through the website, which is called Engage WEHO, which you can leave insights about the plan, even if you can't be here. But we are going to try to make sure that we have enough events to engage a variety of different folks.
Really looking forward to seeing all of those amazing, diverse opinions come about into a really streamlined document that will help us, a city of 34,000 people, to be collectively together and really powerfully.
Sustainability and climate resilience. So those are, they're in order.
We're at the West Hollywood Civic Leadership Academy, and it's our commencement day. We've finished all of the sessions, we've learned a lot about the city, and today we get to wrap it up.